We'll wait on Joe. Call to order the full city council meeting for February 7th, 2023. The clerk will call the roll for attendance.
Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bartley?
Here.
Givner?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
Maldonado Velez?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
McGivern?
Here.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Here.
Puelo?
Here.
Israel Rivera?
Here.
Jenny Rivera?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
And the city of Holyoke.
And the city council.
First, for voting purposes, Councilor Jordan was pulled first, so when voting, it'll go to him first. Also, before we get to anything else, I do have to do a little housekeeping for this little lady right here. My buddy. My MAC Attack is five. She's turning five, so happy birthday, big girl. I love you. With that, there is a motion to go out of order to 56.
Removed.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. The city council present a proclamation to Amy for her outstanding work and dedication as the interim director for the DPW, not the BPW.
For the Public Works, that's right. Motion to, motion to approve.
Motion to receive and approve the proclamation. All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Our new director is here. He will, he just wanted to say hi to everyone, but he will be here for Amy. She had a scheduling conflict for tonight, but it'll be the second meeting in March that will give her this. And I know former Councilor Patty Devine will be very nice in getting that proclamation to us. But then our new director will be here and I'll ask him to come up and say some words on Amy's behalf, who's just been outstanding in that position, helping us out. So with that, Director, thank you for being here, and we'll see you in March on this.
Good luck.
All right. So...
Ever seen so many commissioners in this room?
I know. It's great. All right, so just to make sure I said it, so all those in favor for proclamation?
Aye.
All opposed, so that one's approved. Go back to item one.
Motion to take one off the table.
Second.
Item one, motion is moved to table.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. This is from Finance, which was the 2022 Brian Grant for $37,248. There was no match, but we're looking for a list of what they were getting. And I know Sergeant Hart is online. He also got an email to us on it. So this would be motions to receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Our discussion, Councilor McGivern.
Thank you. We did, as you stated, Mr. President, report this out of Finance with, sorry, at the time, the Finance Committee meeting Sergeant Hart was out of state. He tried to join us at the last city council meeting via telephone, but that didn't work out. So I know he's with us this evening. Just real quickly, the email, not everybody here got, but just so we can let everybody out there in TV land know, this year's grant, it's an annual grant, usually used for, almost always used for equipment. There are some administrative costs, as of any grant, that can be taken out. But the equipment, our five mobile street cameras installation, $15,000. Miscellaneous radio equipment with chargers, batteries, et cetera, $15,000. Taser batteries, $25,000. A UPS backup battery for the camera system, $1,053. That totals 37,248. The administrative cost that will be taken out is $3,695. The committee recognized the burn grant, but we realized, and I think appropriately so, wanted to have this year's more specific, so we played it on the table at the last city council meeting. We do recommend adoption.
When you went further, Councilor Jordan.
Just for future reference, if somebody can't make it, they might can just send an email, you know, and just lay it out and, you know, just say it's for this and give that quick one paragraph report.
Yep.
You know, we understand that it can't always come to the meetings. Thank you.
So, Councilor.
I just wanted a second. What Counselor Jordan was just saying, I was gonna say the same thing. It was just a quick communication as to what it is we're, they're gonna be, we're gonna miss out on because they're not present, just like some of the other department heads do. But at the same time, too, another thing, I'm still gonna vote yes for it and push it through. But I remember they were hiring for a grant coordinator position. Is there any update on whether or not they hired somebody for that with regards to keeping track of receipts and all the other stuff, too? That's it, pretty much.
Counselor McGivern.
Good advice, and certainly we always, you know, respect any department head or any person that's been delegated to reach out with information to us by email prior to a meeting. I just don't want that to be the rule of thumb because emails can't answer questions. But when, remember Sergeant Hart was supposed to be online with us that evening, and it just, it was more of a technical difficulty, not a miss of the meeting. But absolutely, in the future.
So pass the first reading. All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading. Clerk will call roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the grant.
Did you pull a counselor to go first?
Counselor Jordan.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
See.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one, too. Still stays there. Public comment, I do have one signed up for tonight. Kathleen Hamel, 231 Oak Street. If you come to mic, just tap it to make sure it's on. There's a button underneath, on the mic itself.
Above.
Above. They moved it. There you go. So name, address, and then we'll turn it over to you. I know I read it, but it's here.
Okay. My name is Catherine Hamel, and I live at 231 Oak Street. I built my house, I got my CO in June of 2017. And the reason why I chose it, because the neighborhood is like really great. There's some really good people on both sides of me. Most of the houses around are two-family and others. It was an old Victorian that burnt down, and the property had been vacant since, yeah, from 1976, it actually. Anyway. The reason why I'm here is because I'm requesting that the council, and I apologize if I'm a little nervous, never, public speaking is not, anyway. I'm requesting that the council put on the agenda and consider strongly to look into an issue that occurred at my house for the second time in two years, taking power lines down. The Friday morning, I was in my living room watching a program, and I heard this loud noise, and it was like impact bang, and it scraped aside of my house. And I went in the backyard. The tree had fallen down from my backyard. Not my backyard, it was, I live on the block between Cabot and Essex on Oak Street. And we were back-to-back with Linden. And the neighbors' trees, which I'm sure other people, residents of Holyoke, are familiar and doing the same issues. The tree is rotted, and the windstorm that we were experiencing that whole night, because that Arctic blast had come in, the temperatures dropped drastically. I called the emergency crew because the power had gone out immediately. And the whole block on that side was out. They graciously, they came out within like half an hour, they were out there. And they were working in uncomfortably frigid weather. I have pictures. My point being is, it's my neighbor's tree. And again, this is the second time in two years that something like this has happened, where power has come out from a tree that has come down from his yard into mine. And I'm retired, I'm on a fixed income, trying to make my yard look really nice. And it's slow, because I was like, okay, this is what I can do on my retirement. Yay. However, the crews that were out there, I felt horrible. They had to, and they did it quickly. The power was restored again within three hours, which was great. But the neighbor has to be held accountable. This is his tree. It's rotting, and it needs to be like with other things, especially because my house on this particular area is, has an easement for the utilities. The two utilities are the sewer, which is wicked old, and the electric, which needs to be, that's where the electric access. The only house that you can get access to both of these utilities is from my property, where you can actually get a truck with those big arms. So I'm requesting that the council take up, put it on agenda, and really do some digging or do something to either change the law or make it to where that the people who own property, and they have these trees that could possibly, you know, this is preventative work that they could do. Get it done and hold them accountable, not just turn around and say, well, it fell on your property, so it's your problem. I don't know what else to say, except I'm putting it in your hands. I'm gonna take it a little step further. Somebody requested, somebody said to me to talk to my city councilman for the district or something. So I'm gonna contact him next. But this just happened on Friday. And the tree, the diameter or the radius is like, the biggest one was 27 inches. So it's a pretty decent-sized tree. And I sent, I talked to Stephen Frey, I think his last name is, from with the mayor's office. He came out, he took pictures. I've talked to the city forester, I've talked to David Ball, I think, or, and it's like, okay, I need to take it a step further because this is really important to me, and it's not fair for me as a resident here in the city of Holyoke. I've been here since 2014, for reasons I don't need to get into. But I came up, I built a house, I want to stay here, and I'd like to be able to have your help to resolve this matter.
Okay. So what we can do is have you contact the ward counselor, or you can contact an at-large counselor as well, and they can help you kind of go through that process. And I do believe their counselor's coming to you.
Sure.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're my him.
Anyone online?
Sorry, I didn't sign up. I was a little late.
Go ahead. All in favor?
Couldn't possibly vote no on that.
Thank you, Counselor McGivern. JR, John Rivera, 125 Cabot Street. And really amazing testimony there, more the reason to fund our public safety committee, without a doubt. Recently, I was at a Tyree Nichols, rest in peace to Tyree Nichols, rally out in Northampton. And there was, you know, my personal demand of making sure that we allot a certain amount of money to the public safety committees throughout a lot of municipalities. I think we have a lot of power here in Holyoke to do so. And, you know, more the reason right there. We not only fund our public safety committee, that falls under public safety, but as well as fund our city forester, as well as arborist as well. But since it's budget season, I would make a recommendation for counselors to really appeal to the mayor in this budget creation, to allot this money from the police department over to the public safety committee and have public hearings on the basis of, you know, how can we spend that money to, you know, fund our city in a different retrospect than policing, in a different, you know, safety measure than policing? I'll leave my comments there. Thank you for suspending the rules, and have a good night, colleagues.
Thank you. No one online? So no one online, so that ends public comment. Do you want to take up three, four, and six?
Mr. President?
Go ahead. Go ahead, Juan.
I'd like to suspend the rules and take up items number 62 through 65.
62 to 65.
I'll second that.
The motion is take up two to 65.
Can I have a friendly amendment to take up the late filed orders that are associated with that, too? Is that okay, Juan?
Yeah.
And late files?
Whatever they are, I don't remember the letters.
Well done.
Get them out of the way.
All right, so also E and F, so all those in favor.
Aye.
So 62 is...
President McGee, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. But I'm looking at Counselor Murphy Rumbelletti's order 45, and it looks similar to one of your orders there. Just want to make sure if that's the case.
Why don't we suspend the rules and add number 45, too?
And add 45. All those in favor?
Thank you, Counselor.
So 45 is from Counselor Murphy Rumbelletti, order that pursuant to Rule 9P, that the following orders be discharged from the ordinance committee. Order that the law department be given authority to hire a paralegal above mid-range. 62 from myself, according to Rule 9P, that we also rule that Section 2-40-41 of the city ordinances regarding vacation leave be amended to credit new employees and existing employees with paid vacation, and it gives a schedule. 63, also another 9P with regards to 2-42-41, which is correcting or update the correct language to those. 64 is to, regarding the vacation leave to be amended and add language to the city may credit a new employee with additional paid time based on prior employment. 65 is that the council place on the floor an order for 2-35S, which is our F, for personal days to amend to four days. And then E is from the Personnel Department, which is a list of vacations for different unions and an update on schedules for that. And then F is a letter from the mayor writing for support for the various ordinances in the 2-40, and supporting that we do something to deal with the vacation issues. So all those up as a package, we said yes. Those are the orders. Counselor Anderson Burgos?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to get back to it. So as far as, one specific order that I was thinking about, you know, I was in a meeting the other day.
Just, Mr. President, disrespectfully, can we just have a motion? Because I do want to hear what you have to say, but I, just for our rules, we need a motion.
Yeah, we're gonna get there. I just had to pull all of them up.
Because I want to hear what the counselor says, but what action do we want to take?
So, Counselor Anderson Burgos?
I wanted to act on them now.
So a motion is to receive, poll from committee?
Correct.
To vote on them? To take, a motion would be to receive and adopt them, to be put into legal form?
Well, just a point of order. First motion, Mr. President, would have to be to remove it from committee.
Right.
We can't do anything until...
I know, I'm getting it all of it, though. That's, I think that's where he's trying to go.
That's what I was, sorry about that.
Okay. All right, so a motion is removed from committee. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Do you want to address it first?
So, upon looking upon the orders, I was recently in a meeting, and there's a lot of discussion about how it's hard to staff, and it's just not like in a city, it's businesses throughout the country. There's a lot of staffing issues, and it's basically due to, I mean, there's a lot of mixed feelings about what's going on. But in this particular case, I feel that a lot of the employees that work for our city, who work day in, day out, you know, I think about these employees, they have families, they work hard. And I feel that they deserve more, and that is why I decided, you know, when I was looking upon these orders, I felt the need that this should be definitely discussed and acted on tonight, this evening.
Anyone further? Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I understand the interest in the counselor filing the motion to have certain things addressed, but I want to know two things. As a matter of process, one of the orders is in committee, waiting for information, which some of it has been provided tonight. And two of the orders under consideration were filed at the end of December. Now, every committee chair in here has orders in their jacket that are way older than that. And so I just think as a matter of process, I want to share with my colleagues how I create the agendas. So as you know, many of our agendas are time-controlled, due to state law and other regulations. So Jeffrey and I coordinate on those and make sure that we are in the timeline on those. Others are active and have been considered by the committee, and then the next steps are taken, and those are fit into the agenda. Other items that seem to be needed, such as you'll see a couple of them tonight, relative to legal matters before the city, et cetera, are then considered as priorities. Once we get all of those things put together, I check in with Jeffrey and we compare notes, and I ask him if there have been any particular request to move any of the orders that are in the jacket that I may either have overlooked or don't have in my pile of papers, et cetera. And at that point, we collaborate. He lets me know if somebody reached out to him, and I let him know if somebody reached out to me. And that's how we get the agenda put together. Now, once we get up to 20, 25 items, then things get pushed. And I check in with the committee, do you want to have an extra meeting, which we've had from time to time, et cetera. So that's how the agenda gets put together. Now, in all the years I've been on the council, typically if there is a matter that is of concern relative to getting something moved, there would be communication. To me as the chair, the role of every chair, as you that are chairs know, is to set the agenda. So you can imagine my surprise when I saw these on the agenda after just having met with Jeffrey, talking about the agenda for February 28th, and neither of us had any requests or outreach from anybody to move anything. And these orders are relatively new. So I want to be very clear with my colleagues and the public how we are looking to do the business of the constituents that we represent. And I totally understand people wanting to look out for our employees. We all do. We have been very supportive, particularly of our law department, changing pay, making their job hours flexible, et cetera. However, when we then come to adding more benefits, it requires a due diligence on the part of the committee, which the committee had been doing and intends to continue to do. And now we have much more information than we had prior to yesterday, with which to address these questions. So on both the substance and the time, I would respectfully request of my colleagues that if the matters pertain to ordinance, send them to committee. If it pertains to charter and rules, send it to charter and rules. But the rules are being followed, and to go out of order in this manner is highly irregular and I think is really not doing justice under the open meeting law and informing the public. Thank you.
Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Mr. President. I can definitely understand that this hasn't been in committee so long. However, it does, it does affect a lot of city employees. And I know that this was brought before us because it wasn't an effort to hire and fill positions and also just show appreciation to city employees. So regarding specifically the vacation changes, this was an ordinance in my, under my understanding, it was written in 1972, and it hasn't changed since. So I think it's, it should, we should have a little more urgency in changing it, especially if, you know, people work for the police department or the fire department or another department that has a, that where the employees are in a union, and they have like a union to fight for them and update their agreements every year. So unlike those who are in a union, our city employees don't have someone to fight for them. We are supposed to be fighting for them. We are, you know, their union in a sense. So I understand our chair's process, but I think it's also okay to just say, you know, it would be a really good idea to get this on the floor and vote in favor so that we can hire people and appreciate people who work for the city full-time. Thank you.
Counselor Rivera?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think the first thing I would say is, thank you for chairing the committee. It's a lot of work, right? I chair a committee, I know the pressure it takes and the toll it takes on trying to like maneuver and trying to make sure you're making everybody happy at the same time that have filed their orders, making sure that all of their orders are being addressed in a timely manner. But also, speaking to that particular matter, I think the team has been trying to fill the position for quite some time and has been having some difficulties doing that. So they've been trying to make this a more pressing matter for us as a council. And apparently, there are other issues throughout the community that are more pressing than making sure that our law department is fully staffed. That's one piece, right? Then the other piece to me is just, interestingly, I want to know the process and see the process because there was an order filed, but I believe, by I believe the president, President McGee, back in December of 2021, trying to change an ordinance around public employees running for council. And I have reached out to the chair on a variety of occasions to see why that order still hasn't come up in ordinance. It's been about a little over a year now, and it still hasn't come up. So I'll be sure, I'm still speaking, please? So I'll be sure to reach out again to make sure that the ordinance does come up before my election of the first two years passes through. But it's just, at the end of the day, if we're gonna be transparent, let's be transparent and say the reality of what it is. I, too, am managing a committee. I actually put forth as much as I can that has recently came forward, doesn't matter who it's coming from. And at the end of the day, we, again, I appreciate the time and effort that everyone is putting into managing their committees, because it is a lot of work. But we got, it's part of the game, it's part of our duties to try to be able to balance the orders to make sure that everyone and all the constituents throughout the community is being heard at the same time, not just prioritizing certain things that have to do with moving business forward throughout the community. It's about everything that comes forward to us. But again, I appreciate all that, all the counselors are doing for the committees, because it is a lot of work. Takes time away from your family, takes time away from your kids, if you have kids. But yeah, thank you.
Counselor Murphy Rumbelletti?
I have a point of order, Mr. President.
Counselor Bacon?
The point of order is, the counselor is stating that the order he's referring to was never taken up. That order was taken up, it was brought to council, it was voted on council, and disposed of. So I want the record to be straight on that.
It was tabled in committee, it wasn't disposed of.
Yes, we had a vote on that matter, and it failed to pass.
It was referred back to committee, I know that. But you can always follow up with...
It was taken, and it failed to pass.
Okay. So with that, we'll go to Murphy Rumbelletti.
Phew. Well, I was actually gonna say, just similarly to Counselor Rivera, you know, I understand there are a lot of things in committee, and, but this is definitely more urgent, time-sensitive. It is my understanding that... It is my understanding that the, the Law Department did provide all the information that was asked of them, and it's also my understanding that they've missed out on several new hires because of this delay. And I just think it's our responsibility, if there's ordinances or rules or whatever, that limit our ability to make the city a competitive place to work and a rewarding place to work, it's, it's just long overdue. The, the vacation order in particular has been there since, since August, so I can appreciate the other ones that were filed in December, I get that. But, you know, at the same time, I, I just feel like we have to, it's, it's our responsibility as city counselors to make sure everything gets tied back to city employees, and who's working for us, and who we're getting to hire for us. All city services are tied back to who is working for the city. And if we are not making ourselves a competitive place to work, it is the employer's market out, employees' market out there. And I don't blame anyone who has, you know, said, "I'm skipping out on this position, I'll go to the next one," because it's kind of insulting what we're offering. So just, you know, with that, that's, that's why I'm, I'm hoping that we can just take some action.
Anyone further? Counselor Jordan.
Couple of points. First of all, these evolving rules are rather intriguing to me. First of all, we have committees where we have these thoughtful discussions about items. That's where all this is supposed to take place. People don't like something about something not going fast enough, have a conversation with the Chair. You just heard from the last speaker who said, "Well, the things that were filed at the end of December, I don't have an issue with them, because, by the way, I think they're coming up."
Point of order, that's not what I said.
Hold on, hold on.
I mean, like.
Wait, Counselor Jenny at the floor. If you have a rebuttal to it, you'll have a rebuttal.
That's right.
Counselor's up.
So, didn't have a problem with the fact that these orders were filed in late, I believe the second meeting in December. I'm going to mention something else about that went to committee that night. And those, I think the 40 quote-unquote "magical 45 days," which if I could have a penny for every time the 45-day thing over the history of the City Council wasn't followed, I'd be exceptionally wealthy man. Number two is, that was just February 3rd. That's just a few days ago. Now, I had discussed with the Chair, and it's my understanding, these things are even coming up for the, I think there's a meeting on ordinance on February 28th. I don't see why those items can't be brought up. I, I happen to sit on that committee. We can have those additional discussions, no, no problem. As far as the vacation one, that certainly is impressive, because we just heard from the earlier speaker, these have been the rules for 50 years, but let's solve them. All that discussion, February 7th, you know, let's just go back in a time machine, 50 years, and now let's solve all of the last year of 50 years tonight. That's extremely emergency, must be taken care of right away. Well, let me tell you what's really going on here. First of all, we took that up in committee, and we had a thoughtful discussion. And all of the information provided at the committee has not been provided to us, okay? For example, the estimate of $30,000 that this is going to cost, if you look at Mr. McGee's proposal, item 62, those numbers don't tie out to that, number one. I've pointed this out. Number two is, what, they say they got people down here as zero. Well, what if Debbie leaves? Is it still zero? And we have to backfill the position? What this attempts to create, taxpayers of Holyoke, is carte blanche for the mayor to assess as unlimited amount of vacation, up until and including 30 days of vacation. Citizens of Holyoke, are you getting 30 days of vacation? Because if you don't give them 30 days of vacation, you're not competitive. This is what we're talking about. And by the way, I'd be having all these comments in ordinance, but we have to have it tonight, because that's what people have chosen to do, so I'll continue. So 30, 30 days, because 10's just not enough when you start a job. Well, let's mention, let's mention some of all the other times that are there. 15 sick days, you know, how competitive are we quote-unquote? I've listened to this in committee, and there isn't, by the way, when I ask these questions, there's either no answer, or it's just you get the shrug of the shoulders. And I'll give you what the, the basic retort is back. You've given 15 sick days already. You know how many you get of those in the private sector? Little to none. 13, they had to pass a paid FMLA law just to get five paid in this state. Most citizens are not getting 15 sick days, rest assured of that. On top of that, most in the, in the actual private sector are certainly not getting 13, 14 holidays. That's another three weeks of time. Most are averaging six or seven, okay? And then you have the extras where, "Oh, don't worry, don't come in after Thanksgiving, I'm the mayor, and, you know, we'll keep City Hall closed, so we'll throw that one in as an extra." And you've got all these other days. So we want to talk about how, you know, again, we can have these conversations in committee. So you start off with 10 vacation days. So you add this all up, and you're about, oh, I've, excuse me, I almost forgot, you also get three personal days, okay? Don't want to forget those two. So now you're up to about eight and a half weeks of vacation leave. But that's not enough. I also want to work a 35-hour work week, all right? And that, of course, is very standard across all the private sector. Everybody gets a 35-hour work week, right? Don't you citizens of Holyoke all get a 35-hour work week? You know? And by the way, City Council, we all need all these, this is, we're referring to the department heads now, largely, who fall into this, but for that matter, it could be everybody. There's a whole long list of, of names on here that could now be getting this by stroke of pen of the mayor, heretofore. So the question is, who the hell can afford all of this? You know, you, you make it sound, some make it sound like we're not, do, are we having problems? The people that are yelling the most for this, which is led by the city solicitor, by the way, which is why this is all amplified, you know, because she's beating the drum for her own vacation, quite frankly. That's what this is really all about. And you're saying to us, "That position's filled. These other ones, city solicitor, assistant city solicitor, we don't have recruitment problems, they're all filled." Okay? So their existence proves that's not having a problem filling it with that. And by the way, if we now, so now you need to be, what, up to 10 and a half weeks, 11 and a half weeks? When do people actually come to work? You know, you get three months off? Most people in the dreaded private sector who are schlepping it out here in Holyoke, and by the way, we have a per capita income of $19,000. You think some of these department heads are making $19,000? The people that actually pay their salaries, and then, in the case of the Law Department, none of them live in Holyoke, so the people that are pulling the wagon, okay, have to keep pulling harder. Meanwhile, we're broke. I happen to have the opportunity to read the balance sheet that came out, I commend it to all of you for 2021, that just came out. You know what the balance sheet of Holyoke said? This is assets minus liabilities. Negative $237 million. You know, if you were a person and you were negative $237 million, how about if you were negative $237,000? You know what you are? You're insolvent. It's called bankrupt. But we're not, because cities can't really go bankrupt, because, you know, we have to take care of the city, so they keep this train chugging along, and we have no extra money. We're propped up by the good graces of the beneficence of Washington from ARPA, which gave us $2 million last year and $2 million this year. And you know what the free cash keeps going? 6 million, 5 million, 4 million, 3 million, 2, 1, 0. Two years negative, two years negative. And we talk like, "This is an outrage! How can we possibly not give these people all this extra money?" These are the leaders. And you know what leaders do? They lead. Look at this City Council, we're a good, you know, a for example, you know? We haven't had an increase, all the other city councils around are increasing their salaries, but we shouldn't increase our salary either. Not when you've got financial conditions like this, right? That's why for 25 years, we're still at 10 grand. You know why? Because we can't afford more than 10 grand. That's quite the, frankly, the matter of it. But that's what leaders do, right? And so, fact of the matter is, folks, this isn't some simplistic conversation. This is an in-depth conversation. And leaders lead, and you know what that means? You came to us for a pay raise. We gave you a substantial pay raise. We gave everybody in that department a substantial pay raise. Then we said, "You know, Kevin, we should be allowed to have part-time employees." Okay? Kevin votes yes for all the part-time employees. Kevin, that's still not enough, we need flex schedules! Give us flex schedules, because we work nights and this and that, and we could do other things, and, you know, they, late-night meetings and blah, blah, blah. So we vote to approve that, too. At what point is it licking the plate, folks? Okay? At what point is it now, "I want four weeks vacation, I want five weeks, hell, I want six weeks"? You know? But all a great conversation to have at the Ordnance Committee, and oh, by the way, under the rules, we might as well have it in ordinance on February 28th, because I'm about to invoke a series of rules and Massachusetts state law that's going to prohibit this from passing tonight anyways. So why don't you just, please kindly save your breath and energy, and have this all in ordinance, and we can take it up on February 28th, instead of sitting here spinning our wheels all night. But I love talking about this stuff, because the financial health of this city means, if we're going to be leaders and we're going to be serious, it means saying no sometimes. And it means we're doing what we can, and maybe we can incrementalize stuff. The big one that was told to us was urgent was the DPW Director. We flew that thing out of committee like it was on jet, jet engines, okay? So that they could go beyond the pay scale for this. I haven't heard that, I haven't gotten a call on the paralegal, by the way. That just got filed a month ago, okay? So all this thing about we turned down, you know, three people or lord knows how many people in the last four weeks, I've never gotten a call from the Law Department. I don't know, Linda, if you did.
I have not.
Okay. So I don't know how exactly dire pressing it'd be, because you know how easy it is? It costs nothing to pick up the telephone. Ladies and gentlemen, we all have the best of intentions. You're all lovely, wonderful people, and I know you all want the right thing for Holyoke, but for the love of God, let's cut the baloney and this posturing for certain departments and leaders that think they get special rules. They go through the process like everybody else. They got to stand on the ground and, and stand by their numbers like everybody else. And oh, by the way, if it's going to be the yank out of committee show, I would, there's certain things I'd love to have yanked out of committee, and we can start doing that. For example, same meeting as the Counselor Murphy Ramboletti, we had one about the Ward, who, if, you know, the Ward Council legal opinion that we had. That was referred to public service, and I know Chairman Tomlin works very hard, he'll get to it. I'm not calling him up and saying, "When are you going to get to it?" But that was sent over in late December, that legal opinion came in on December 19th. It's more than 45 days. Peter's a good guy, he'll get to it, right? But I, I think that opinion is bogus, okay? And I'll be quite frank with you, it's incomplete, it's paper-thin, and it ignores specific state laws that specifically are on point, you know, for, for the, well, I'll, I'll wait till we have a meeting for the unveiling. But, you know, basically, there's a specific state law on that, never even mentioned in that legal opinion, but that's been over 45 days. So I don't file a motion tonight, remove from committee, from public service to do this. Guys, come on. Let, let's, let's have a little reason here, allow the ordinance process to work. I think this committee, I sit in these as the other people on ordinance do, go through a huge volume of work on extremely complex stuff. This stuff was taken up, there's lingering questions, and the other ones are coming up shortly. This, this can all work out. Thank you for your time.
Counselor Givner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I hate to think that me saying that it's been there for 50 years means it's not urgent. I don't think that means we can solve it overnight, but it does seem like we have the solution. I don't have a problem with the solution, which I think is voting on it tonight, but that's just me. I, I have a real hard time hearing about all the things we can't do as a city. We want everything, but we also don't want to pay for anything. So where does it stop? You know, we're always arguing against any kinds of tax increases. We don't want anybody to be just, you know, uncomfortable, you know, we don't want people to pay an extra $20 a month on their real estate taxes, like, there's, there's a lot of ways we could work on things and get all, and get everything working, and provide the things for our city employees that they need. And I, I really think it's a little harsh to beat the drum that this is for one person. You know, I see this as an entire city with several departments, several employees, that all would benefit from a vote tonight. And I think there's also people, obviously, who we probably could hire if we had better benefits. I think it's a little unfair to say, "Oh, my God, people are going to have a whole month off vacation." Like, is that the worst thing on the planet? Is it so bad to get more personal time? Like, you know, we talk, or I hear a lot here about the private sector, and I'm sorry, but this isn't it. And I worked in higher ed for a really long time, and I had really great benefits, and I really appreciated them. And they included things like a whopping 45 days of vacation, and all the vacation days, and every holiday, and half-days, and the day after Thanksgiving, and the day before Thanksgiving. And I didn't think that was awful. And I understand that if you're at a private institution, maybe you can expect that, because it's private, but I worked at UMass, and they had a lot of great benefits, and I was really appreciative, appreciative of them. So I don't think it's awful to treat our employees with respect, give them the types of benefits that they deserve. And I think this argument that they don't deserve something because you don't have it is not really nice, and it's not valid. You know, we should be providing for people what we can. If we can't make the numbers match, that's, you know, that's obviously a problem, but I don't see that being the problem in Holyoke. I see things changing in a positive way, and I think if we didn't fight so hard to keep people from paying an extra 20 bucks a month on their real estate taxes, it would offset some of the other things we need, including school budgets, including, you know, sewage system budgets, including all kinds of things we need. So ARPA will offset many things, and if we, as a community, can come together and support each other, we can make sure that the people who work so hard for us, who we don't want to leave, because if our department heads start leaving, I have no idea who's going to want to come here and replace them. And I don't think it'll be easy to recruit anyone to come here to replace them, especially not at salaries that are lower than those in neighboring communities with benefits packages that don't match. So I understand that we need to think of all these things. It is very complex, and I realize I don't understand every aspect of everything, but if we can do little things that make a big difference in the lives of our city employees, I think it's really important, and I think we should. So thanks.
Counselor Anderson Burgos.
I'm going to take my time, because my anxiety level started reaching a height that I'm like, "Okay, be careful what you say," because my job here is not to offend anyone or to cause a distraction or whatever, but I, I want to make a couple of points. This is my third term, and I've seen how business is conducted here. I've seen personally some of my own orders held up in committee intentionally. I'm not going to say what committee, and I'm not going to say which orders, just that's a fact. And the reason why I can say that is because I've been here long enough to experience it for myself. That's one. Two, our President, Mr. McGee, President McGee, filed these orders. This gentleman has been in these chambers longer definitely than me. This gentleman has been in these chambers longer definitely than me. So I truly feel in my heart that if he filed these orders, that he had every right to and for good reasoning, for a very good purpose. So that's why I decided to suspend the rules to take up these orders. Three, like a good story, the scare tactic story that is very condescending when you talk about people belittle or whatever. It's a shame. That's not who I am. Sometimes I, I, I sit back and say, what are we doing here? Please don't think for one minute that this is not intentional because it is. It really is. The, the communication has gone out on a few of these orders, and it was still ignored. Now, I can't, I just feel because of, I'm, I'm speaking of my own experiences being here a third term, that I sense that as well. And someone who's a newcomer who mentioned it, if this counselor is catching on, then obviously, we have something here in front of us. Another one, threats. I don't take threats lightly. And if that's how people want to conduct themselves to get their way because something wasn't taken up in committee, shame. And I hope everyone's watching, and please record, share with your friends. This is ridiculous. This is what we're doing on your taxpayers' dollar. And since the law department was mentioned, that's going to be another point I'm going to make. Let's talk retaliation, shall we? The law department is, I'm not going to lie, is the department that's been asking, and rightfully so, because of the, the thing, the comments I made earlier when I first spoke, that these are people who have families, and it's a little to give. It's not no 30 days or whatever. And, and coming up with this, oh, the mayor will sign off and give whatever they want is another way of tricking the public and this body to vote a certain way because they don't like what they're seeing. So retaliation against the, the law department is what I see here. And I'm not going to mention why, but let's say this. I don't have to because deep down inside, we all know why the law department would be retaliated against. That's it.
Counselor Rivera was next.
I guess I would say it was a great, inspiring speech is the first thing I would say, right? About leadership in the community, especially coming from a very experienced counselor that's been around for a while now. That's the first piece, I guess. And then the thing for me is, though, when I ran, it's not about always, I guess, I guess about like happy-go-lucky statements and, and, and trying to paint a pretty picture every time, but it's about not trying to come up with divisive narratives all the time, right? For me, and, and leader, that's not leadership in a sense, right? Working together and trying to come up with a solution to try to move the city forward. You don't have to tear down the departments. We don't have to tear down our, our, our city. We don't have to say that our AMI is 19,000 a year. And I, I don't, you may not have said AMI, but that's not actually correct if you did say AMI. It's actually 45,000. But from 2017 to 2021, actually, the census says that. But it's divisive. There's a way to put it out there and to get your message across without having to tear down the community and tear down our city and our departments. If, if there, there are issues with certain department heads, then we can have conversations on the side. For me, as a counsel, since I've been here, it's, even when I got elected, it's always been like us against them or them against us. Why does it have to be that way, I guess, right? The world doesn't have to be perfect. We don't all have to get along, but we all work together and we're part of a team. Ultimately, we don't have to agree, but there are ways to come up with solutions that kind of help each other, build each other up to a point where we want to work with each other, not work against each other. And I keep coming to a point where I want to work with people, but I'm feeling like it's not, it's not being reciprocated, right? It's not always about the catchphrase or the long story that, that'll help you feel like you're actually doing your due diligence here as a counselor. Because if you're doing your due diligence, it'll show, it'll come out. Like, people will know, and they'll come out and they'll speak to you, and they'll say, thank you for your service, all those things, right? For me, the divisive narrative that continues to come up every time is not helping us as a community, and it's not helping us as a counsel, right? Then with regards to like vacation times and giving people extra personal days, we got people out on injured duty for five years, bro. Like, and we're still approving their budgets, right? We're still giving more, more money for more officers to be on. We're still, there's a lot of things going on within the budget of the police that, that are not even being questioned. But when it comes to give anybody else any raises, there's an issue. Or anything when it comes to equalling out vacation time or equalling out any other services that come from us as a city, there's an issue. To me, it gets to a point where it's like, there are certain things, you don't have to be critical of a certain department. If you're going to be critical of a certain department, you have to be the same critical of another department. It has to all be the same across the board. I filed an order to get the traffic squad going, hopefully, and if they need more money for that, I might vote yes for it, right? Even though I don't actually want to add more to their budget, but if they need that, and that's what the city needs for us to have a traffic squad, then I'm going to probably advocate for that and work with the chief to get that done. But at the end of the day, are we going to say that there's not enough money in the budget for that? Because if I, if I don't hear that, but we're hearing that for this, come on, what are we doing? What's, like, what are we doing? Again, some people are saying we're picking and choosing for certain departments, but we could say the same thing for other departments, and it's been going on for 30 years sometimes. Like, it's not my fault that our budget is at this point. I have, I've only been on here for a year at the end of the day, right? And, and no shots at nobody, but at the end of the day, when we come down to it, if we're working together as a counsel, we work together to build up and build each other up or build the departments up. If you do not agree with it, I get it, but there's no reason to go on a huge rant that literally tears down our departments and tears down us as counselors. Like, what are we getting? What are we getting when we do this, right? If we want to bring new people into here, even if we are paying them what they need to get paid, even if we are giving them the vacations that they want, they still might not want to work here because we're a difficult counsel to work for at the end of the day. So like, what is this? What are we doing? What are we actually getting done for the people versus for ourselves? Right? If I win again next time, great. If I don't, great. I'm still going to be advocating. I'm still going to be organizing community events. I don't quit just because I'm not a counselor. Like, my thing, my passion for Holyoke is way past just the city council. You do not just see me show up for Holyoke at city council meetings. I'm everywhere. I'm up in Ward Seven, I'm in Ward Two, Ward Three, Ward Five, Ward Six. I'm even in Chickaby and Springfield. At the end of the day, I'm where the people need me, and that's the idea. And that's what we should all be. We should all be working together to try to progress to that point. Right? Private versus public. Private sector, you may not get some of the benefits that you do get in public, but in the private sector, you can get overtime. In the public sector, you do not get overtime, right? You get bonuses in the private sector, significant bonuses. You do not get that in the public sector. In the private sector, there are a variety of ways for you to advance way faster. In the public sector, that is not happening. Everything is capped. Everything is based on pay scales and schedules. In the private sector, they have the same, but they have way more flexibility to add more if they're making more money, and as they should. Here in, in our community, it's a travesty that us city counselors can't file an order to give actually a 3% raise for, for us as city counselors while everyone else across the state is constantly raising their salaries, and some of their budgets are similar to ours. So at the end of the day, we are always saying, you give more than you can for your city, which I have no problem doing with. I was actually one of the people that was going to sacrifice my salary as a counselor if they allowed me to serve while I was going to be an HBS employee. I would have sacrificed my whole $10,000, but that wasn't even enough. If people are really calling for money, they would have been okay with the $10,000 that I would sacrifice a year, but they weren't okay with that. So it's not always about money. Sometimes it's about principle and their own points that they want to get across as counselors. That is not a fair assessment for our city, and that is not something that our city needs for us to move forward. Again, we all bring valued information to the table, and we all have skills. We all have skills. Like, I appreciate almost everyone on here. I can't say that forever. But at the end of the day, where it comes down to it, we're working together to get to, to get Holyoke together to move forward. And if you're not doing that, then, then what are we doing? What are we doing? Collecting a check for 20 years, 30 years, 40 years? What are we doing? Thank you.
Counselor Vacan.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'd like to bring us back to the topic at hand. I know it's campaign season, but let's try to focus on the people's business. And I would first like to remind my colleagues that we're an elected body to represent our constituents. We are not a body, a union, et cetera. We are a representative body of the citizens who vote us into these seats. This is a very challenging combination of orders that are all packaged together. So the main matter of affordability comes around the time issue because, as we all know, time is money. Now, it's been stated that that order's been in committee since August. For the record, there was no further communication back to the committee based on questions answered in the committee until practically December. So please, stop casting aspersions to a committee that was waiting for information until practically December. I will further note that when this council, I believe unanimously, supported the changes to the DPW executive director, we had people come down from the commission. They provided us documentation. They provided us with recruitment efforts that had gone on for more than a year. And that is how we arrived at special circumstances. In the situation that we're talking about tonight, there has been no correspondence other than the request for it to be waived due to special circumstances. There's been no articulation of what those special circumstances are. How long has the position been open? How many applicants have made it but then declined due to the pay? We had all of that information for our consideration when we did it for the DPW superintendent because it was special. And so that is what the committee is looking for. The committee is looking for communication, documentation, so that we are being equitable when we're applying things from one department to another. So affordability is a key number. We all have in front of us information from the audit. Costs are not just the cost this minute for what this change will be. The costs all go into the base, and then it gets built upon from year to year, percentage by percentage. We all know this. In our most recent audit, it said that the city didn't even factor in max accruals and payouts for the liability of the city. So we're here talking about increasing them when we haven't even had a good track record of knowing what our liabilities are. That is the kind of thing our constituents want us to do. For the folks who say, what's another $20 a month for the taxpayers? That's what the taxpayers have been hearing for 20 years. And guess what? Their taxes are double now what they were 20 years ago. So these people are hurting, and if you're a ward counselor, I would bet $100, you've had somebody complaining to you about their tax bills going up, or maybe they're not communicating with you. Because it is one of the most frequent things I'm hearing from the people that I represent. So it is our duty to do our due diligence, to know what effect it will have on the budget. We're doing our job. We're representing our constituents. We're not picking and choosing. What started out as a request for one department is now a request for all the Schedule A employees. It has changed from one thing to another. So when it changes, it has to be vetted. 11/28/22, cost information on the paper that you have tonight. Draft legal language was provided to us describing how flexible the vacation time should be so that the mayor or the department head could just decide based on the person's resume and experience. Was it relevant? Should it be counted? So the previous speaker who said it opened the door wide open was not misrepresenting. The speaker was saying what the language that was provided to us described and is still sitting in committee because that is what the language essentially said. So these things have to be vetted. And in front of this body and in committee, relative to the rules that we seem to be relying on more than in the past, it says, nothing will be put in legal form for the council to consider until the committee requests it. So it is completely out of order for a department to give some draft language to a committee, which is essentially describing what the committee would, in normal order, be asking for. It is not in order to have draft language before the committee has debated, discussed, asked questions, reviewed information, and after all that, requests legal form. And I have asked our law department to return to normal order of business. This is something that developed in years previous, and as the Chair of Ordinance, I have requested that we go back to normal order according to the rules. And that's what we've been operating by. We all have orders sitting in jackets that we would like to see taken up. And on some occasions, we've requested multiple times for that to happen. It's part of what happens. I don't take it as a personal whatever, but it happens. We can take it personally, or we don't have to take it personally. I guess that's a choice, but it happens to every one of us sitting in the room. But I just want to be clear how long we waited for the information, and now suddenly, yesterday afternoon or evening till tonight, we got buried in information. This needs to be properly debated, discussed, and reviewed in committee. And once it is, then it goes for legal form. And if special circumstances exist, the committee should be vetting what they are and making a recommendation back to this body. It shouldn't get rammed through along with five other things without doing our work. And that is what the people that vote for us, hire us to do. Look out for them, the taxpayers, the renters. And don't think their rent doesn't go up when the landlord's taxes go up. And I dare any of you sitting around the room that own property to tell me your taxes have not doubled in the last 20 years. And I dare any of you sitting around the room that own property to tell me your taxes have not doubled in the last 20 years. Because they have, and that's not 20 bucks a month. So, we're doing our job. We're doing it correctly. Aspersions have been cast to make it seem like the ordinance committee has not been, but the ordinance committee has been. And I want everybody out there to know, we are doing the people's business, we're following the rules, and we're doing our due diligence. And there is no way on earth this package of orders should be passed tonight. And I don't believe by law it can even happen anyway. Thank you.
Counselor Malavales.
Thank you, President McGee. Does everyone feel like it's going to be a long night tonight? So, on the first, like breaking down the orders, I've been vocal about it before. Unlimited time off is what I'm hoping to go towards eventually. If the people are doing the work, if the workers are doing what they need to be done for the city, make sure that everything is being accomplished, then I don't really care if they take some time off. They just need to make sure that our city is operating the way it's supposed to be operating. That's my focus. And then the mayor, whoever is leading the department, figures those vacation times with the employee. So the way I see it is any step in that direction, I'm in support of. It's not enough in my eyes, but you know what? We'll go, we'll take those little steps there. On the, around the other part of the orders, around Rule 9P, I would say a thank you to Counselor Murphy Rombley and Counselor and President McGee for putting these orders because year, a year and one month and still learning, and now I know this is other tool that we can use so that we can put orders on the agenda of items that have not been taken up, that have been in the agenda, whether we're saying that they weren't, they were voted down, they are in committee, that have not been taken up. So, thank you for sort of opening that other tool, you know, in our newbie's tool chest. All orders are set, 9P, all orders sent to any subcommittee be acted up on, taken up, not disposed up within 45 days. December 20th was 49 days ago. So, within the rules that we all voted on, that we all decided on, because this was one of the first rules that we were discussing chartering rules, they are within the rules of being able to put this on the agenda and have this discussion tonight. There's another order, and I'll just say it briefly because it's not in this order, around having other committees. We have a lot of orders that we kept, today we have 30 orders that we're putting into different committees. You know, we're talking about adding different committees, like, oh no, we don't want to have multiple committees. There's 13 of us. There's no reason why three of us, three committees with three people, as nine of us can all meet at the same time in one night discussing all the different orders that we have. Because it is our job to make sure that what we're doing is for the people of our city. And I don't know about y'all, but like, we're not doing enough. Right? And then when we're saying that we want to add more committees, oh, we don't get paid enough because that's what it's been said, we don't get paid enough, but people say we're not going to do races. Okay, so, going back to Counselor Givner's point, like, what are we doing here? You know, we're talking about this is campaign season, so let's be rooted on our political beliefs. There are some individuals here that would rather have less government involvement. And I see this being played out in front of us because we're not taking up the real orders of the people in our city. I get emails all the time, not just from fellow colleagues, but from people in the community. "Hey, when is this other order kind of getting taken up?" "Oh, we gotta talk to the chair." We're not doing the work that we're supposed to be doing. So honestly, when I see this, I'm like, okay, well, this is a tool that we decided as a body that can be utilized at some point, and now it's being utilized. So, I will go with, I'm in support of this. And it's a 18. Thank you.
Counselor McGivner.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, on the issue of committee. I will vote tonight to support to remove from committee, but by no means is it a reflection of the work of the ordinance committee, the DGR committee, the finance committee, public safety, or public service, which I think most of us who have been around for a little bit recognize the volume in those committees and the work that they do is incredible. And the response for answers to questions is not always there in a timely fashion, but it's still important to do the bulk of our work by committee. But I do want to talk to the reason I would support the removal tonight is urgency. And what I haven't heard, and what I want to reflect upon, and I think we're talking about Schedule A for the most part, is the employees who are impacted by this and have been for decades. Employees like our chief assessor who went 15 years without a pay increase. 15 years, one of the most senior assessors in Western Massachusetts. The, you know, salaries that don't reflect what the positions are and don't reflect the comparable positions within our unions. There's about 21 people, if you don't get into the library, which I've always said and have always been told is a special schedule, that are impacted by this. 21 people. Most of them cannot join the PSA because they are confidential employees by appointment or confidential employees by duty or it just doesn't make sense to have them in that association, which was created as an association and recognized as a collective bargaining unit by, I believe, the first time Mayor Martin Dunn. These employees don't have a collective bargaining unit for them. Most of what is being proposed this evening is comparable to what is in many of the collective bargains that this body, we don't negotiate, but we've approved the appropriations for them. And some of them, you know, if you go across the board, are comparable, you know, office to office in this building and next door, where the next office person is getting what's been proposed here. The order that's been in committee the longest, I'm a big supporter of, and that's when a new employee comes in to allow them, the appointing authority, to recognize where their experience is coming from and a comparable benefit towards the experience. That is standard practice across the board. In the private sector, that's not even questioned, but in the private sector, there is no one questioning it outside of probably the owner or the upper management itself. And that's important to attract good quality people. To keep good quality people, we need to send the right message to them. Doesn't always happen in the salary, in the base salaries. Our law department is the lowest base salary in Western Massachusetts and probably beyond that. We have a number of very professional people on this list, it's around 21 people, if my memory serves me right, who fall into this category. Where there are many more who are protected again by the collective bargaining units. Tonight, if we do remove these from committee, I mean no disrespect to Counselor Bacon and her committee, nor would I expect any disrespect to any of our chairs or any of your, of the other committees. But I do see an urgency here because these are the positions that we're losing. These are the positions that have been, when they're vacant, have remained vacant for an extraordinary amount of time. And I think whether it's the mayor, whether it's us, I think appointing authorities and bodies need every tool they can to bring in good quality people for these professional positions that are extremely necessary for our government itself. So therefore, I will support the removal from committee. Mr. President, I believe that if it does, if they do get removed from committee, we're looking at referring to the law department to put into legal form and the final vote would not be this evening, but at our next meeting.
That is correct. Next is Counselor Puelo.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. So I have to respond to a couple of these comments because they're just, I mean, they're a little outrageous. So, when people come up here and they start talking about tearing down the community and building up, I mean, you really, people at home really got to stop and think about votes that people have taken and some of the things that people have done here in the past, okay? And that's just a fact. When you have councilors that have personal blogs and they rip other councilors apart, that's not building up community. All right, that's not helping up the town. When you have councilors that attack orders that other people file, and then a couple of months go by and they file the same orders for their ward, that's not building up community and helping up your constituents. That doesn't do that, okay? That looks a little silly. This comes down to the financials. And that's why I think it's so important that people at home understand because it's voting season and we keep talking about this. And I really do have to thank some colleagues on this council for doing diligent and very, very, very good work. And I mean that from the bottom of my heart, looking into things the way that we should all be looking into things and taking the time to understand certain financial aspects of this stuff. When people sit here and they say, "Well, I don't understand the whole thing," then why are you voting yes for it? You know what I mean? Like, the financials of this are so important. I mean, it just, it doesn't make any sense to me. When you have councilors that vote to raise the tax rate, can't make this up. And then they go on Facebook and they say, "Well, the taxes are too high. The rent is too high. You voted to raise the tax rate." I mean, come on. And then you see people on there commenting and saying, "Oh, well, you know, tell them, yeah, thanks for standing up for us." It's not what's happening. So it's important to call this stuff out and people at home really need to understand because it's election season that the important stuff here is the financial aspect of this. And you got to vote for people that really do understand this stuff because if you don't, it's just going to get rubber stamped and passed. Thank you.
Counselor Jordan's next.
Okay, thank you. Couple rebuttals and then I just want to add a couple of more facts because I don't know how this removal from committee will go. First point is, apparently, like, one name was cited here, like the chief assessor. They have her down on this list, by the way, as getting nothing from this ordinance change. Okay? But now, but if you listen to Counselor McGee's version, she's actually going to get more time. You see what I'm saying? The numbers don't add up, guys. And that's just one example out of the 34 on the sheet. Right? This says she's got 20 currently. She's going to get zero under the proposal. That's just not true. And I could go down the list for all 34. So we don't know what the number is. Right? They just stopped at 20. You know why? Because when I said at the committee, by the way, I don't know if everybody went to the ordinance meeting, but for those of you that are keeping track at home, I raised, because the original proposal was to go to five weeks. And I said, "That's crazy." You know, boom, 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 and I sort of spoke against that. Then they dropped it to four weeks. That's why the sheet says four weeks. But what you're about to vote on tonight is five, and now go to six. That wasn't discussed in committee, and that's not reflected in the financial statement that's right there. Did anybody know that? How many of you raised your hand if you knew that before I just said that? You didn't know that. Okay? So this is the point what I'm talking about with due diligence. And I'm sorry, some of us, you're absolutely right, it was alluded to, we just have a different political philosophy. And the voters go in and they say, "I got Jordan on the ballot, I got Anderson Burgos on the ballot, I got all these wonderful people to pick from." We're not all the same, right? We have different views. I'm of the view that we're not a wealthy community. Maybe people have other views. That's okay. I have numbers that back me up. I have financial statements that says, "We're negative $237 million." Do you have a statement that says, "I'll change my opinion if the facts change"? But you don't have a statement that says that. I do. Okay? That's not being divisive. That's reality. That's the financial realities of running a community. That's what you signed up for. And all of this talk about, "Well, you know, the employee and, you know," you never mentioned the impact that this all has on the actual budget. That just seems, that's considered personal, it's considered divisive. I've had that charge levied against me for 25 years. Because I've been the skunk at the lawn party for 25 years, and I'm going to keep being the skunk at the lawn party until I walk out of this room. Because I don't care. I'm here to serve the people of Holyoke, not to make people in the room like me. Okay? I, I want you to like me, you're all wonderful people, but if you don't like me, that's okay. I'll move on. All I'm here is for the citizens. That's what I signed up for. That's what Kevin signed up for. And I'm going to keep saying what the facts are until the facts change. So let me add some more facts. We talked about the taxes. It was alluded to, "Oh, it's 20 bucks more." You know, just put another 20 in an envelope and mail it down every month. To the people that are making, by the way, it's per capita, 2019 Department of Revenue, to one of the person who questioned my number. That is a fact, per capita. And by the way, the per household is $31,000. By far amongst the very lowest in all of Massachusetts. Fact, released by the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services. Okay? By the way, did you ever notice nobody ever comes up with other numbers that challenges my facts? When I put facts out, they don't ever say, "Mr. Jordan, in this report, you're wrong." You ever noticed that? By the way, I'll just leave that as a side footnote. Not an important point, but I just put it out there. Number two. Our tax levy in 1999 was $28 million. You know what it is today? $60 million. Do you know we were founded as a community in 1850? Okay? We're about to celebrate 150 as a city, but we were a town first, as you all well know. And from zero tax levy to 1999, went from 0 to 28 million dollars. That's 150 years, folks. We went from 0 to 28. And you know how much we've gone up in the last, from 1999 to 2023? We've gone from 28 million to 60. The people of Holyoke have had their taxes increased $32 million a year, every year now, and it still ain't enough. These folks out here that we represent, they're paying their fair share. Based on the income that, or lack thereof, that they have. So the fact of the matter is, when you come to work for Holyoke, you work for a poor community. Of citizens that are working poor, folks. That's who we have the privilege to serve. That's what I signed up for. And the reality is, I don't live in Long Meadow, I don't live in East Wilberham and these other more affluent communities where, you're right, giving everybody all this extra vacation, probably doesn't, you know, if it adds another 100 grand to the budget, eh, it's no big deal. We'll just punch that out for another 100 grand. 100 grand right now to this budget, we don't have it. We just don't have it. And I defy anybody to say we have another 100 grand. Because we don't. All right? Especially when we have the budget comes in and we see what little that there is for cuts. We never cut anything, effectively. So these are the difficult decisions that we have to make. But if we're going to make them, we're going to do it in a thoughtful conversation. Not one of these situations where it's, "Well, I'm important or I think I, you know, deserve XYZ" after you've already given all these other things that this person wanted and this department wanted, and it's still never enough. Okay? Because you're right, at a committee here and they have to defend these numbers and defend these costs. And they really can't. And then they under-report what the true cost is. And oh, by the way, the same department said, "I need more people. Give me more people because we have so much work." We give them more people. Now they want more vacation time so that they can have more time away from the job. And by the way, unless you're in the public sector now today, you don't get a defined pension benefit. There's nobody in the private sector. Those are all gone. You know, that never gets mentioned that you come and you work here for 10 years or more, you get a pension. Okay, age 55 or later for the rest of your life. All right? You don't get that in the private sector. You have to contribute into a 401K and all these other things. And as far as, like I said, for the time off, to think that we're going to give people 30 days, according to the McGee order, 30 days, if you're here more than 20 years, 30 plus 15 sec is 45 days, plus another 13, 14 holidays. Okay? What are we up to? 60 days? Then we add on, oh, I guess we're going to go to four, personal days too now, right? We got to get an extra one of those in here tonight. So now we're up to 64 days. Now you divide that by five, because there's five workdays in a week, you're up to 13 weeks. Now, how many weeks are in a month? Approximately four, right? So, you've got four divided by 13 weeks? You know, you've got three plus months off. Think the private sector or anybody working the type of jobs that are paying the taxes, whether they're a mechanic or they're in these regular blue collar jobs, the people that we represent are getting those kind of days off? These are the difficult decisions we have to make. We don't want to take, but we've done what we could by adding on salary, by doing what we could. And I think, again, these conversations should be happening and in finance. And by the way, I would hope that there is five councilors on this council that feel we shouldn't just be disassembling the committee process here by picking and choosing the different orders that we want. Okay? That's not a good precedent. And this council has resisted doing that in the past. We've allowed the committee process to work. All right? And I think you don't want to go there. And um, I think you don't want to go there in terms of doing that. So, um, and by the way, there was a comment also made about workplace injuries. Somebody said, why don't you talk about workplace injuries? Who's the guy over here with the big mouth that's been talking about workplace injuries for the last year? I'm the one that raised the issue. Okay? I'm the one that started talking about workplace injuries and the true cost. I was the one up at the retirement board meeting. We have a retirement board member here. He'll attest that I raised that. I was up at the retirement board. On a nine o'clock in the morning on a Wednesday. And by the way, we don't work hard enough? Speak for yourself. I work hard enough in this job. I give a hundred and ten percent to this job because the minute I don't do a hundred and ten percent is the minute I'm out of here. Okay? This is a labor of love. Lord knows I'm not doing it for the money. That's for sure. Okay? I give a hundred and ten percent. I read all this stuff. I go to all my meetings. I talk to my constituents. And I've been doing it for a long time, not one year, twenty-five years. So I also take a little bit of exception to that. So on that note, we shall have a vote. Thank you.
Counselor Malavales.
I think Counselor Bartley has an issue with that. Um. To the people of Holyoke, regardless of what the tax rate was going to be this year, taxes were going to go up. You're welcome. Don't let any other counselor gaslight you. Thank you. I'm just looking at the camera up there. So that's why. I'm also.
Counselor McGivern.
Just real quick, again, the twenty-one employees that we're talking about, the, this is progressive. It begins at, you know, you know, when you start as an employee, but five years is a key. At least five years, another key, ten years and so on. If you look at the union contracts, you know, we're just trying to get these urgently get these people into a comparable system. Comparable position with other people who work within the city and pretty much so, I, I think you find this across the board. Um, it, it's important because the affordability and taxes are always something that we have to be wary of. Um, I'm very proud to say I voted against the tax rate this year, therefore I voted against those tax increases and everybody knows I'm smiling when I say that. But the truth is, a lot of the increase in the levy was new growth or the market and the sales of property. And that's out of our control. The state decides our taxing scheme. They, they don't want to deal with property tax. The state forces municipalities to raise their revenues through property tax. We, I, I think we can all agree on that. It's the worst way to do it. It's ugly no matter how you pitch it and but new growth is a good thing. And during that period of time when Counselor Jordan was talking about that, there were a lot of new things that were added into the city, which new construction adds to the tax levy more than anything else.
Anyone further? Counselor Vak.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I would just like to add a couple more facts to the discussion. So initially, when we started looking at it in ordinance, we asked for the comparison to the other departments because we were understanding that everybody was less. But when we got the sheet, it showed that the PSA and the people under ordinance were almost exactly identical. So if we increase this, then the PSA is going to be looking at it saying, we want that. Because right now, as we sit here, they're almost identical, except that in the PSA, after twenty-five or more years, they go up to thirty days. In this order that you have before you tonight, which was never in ordinance, with the fifteen, twenty, twenty-five and thirty. Now you're going to get into the game of, oh, now they have more than we do. We want what they have. Because that's kind of what's going on here, you know? We didn't negotiate the union contracts where the money got big and then, oh, we had nothing else to give them, so we gave them more time. So now the contracts that were negotiated by the city are being used to give the more to some more people. So this could just keep going and going. In the meantime, the people that are paying for each of us who are sitting here as city employees aren't getting the more. It's just not happening and you see that in all of the studies that are put in front of us. So for us to pretend we don't know that is to be really just either disconnected or dishonest. So take your pick. Neither of them are good when you're sitting here as a representative of the people who put us in these chairs. I'm listening to the people. They're saying enough is enough. They've been saying it for a long time. They're saying it more frequently and more loudly now. And I really think we should start listening to them. We have done many things to improve the working conditions for the employees here in the city. We value the city employees, which is why we've done the things we have, but that doesn't mean we can do everything they want. We are still looking at this. It is properly in committee. Tonight, we received more information and these orders that were not filed until the end of December are different again from the orders that were originally in committee. So I ask you to please leave these in committee. Let us finish our work. We will put them on. Get ready for a long meeting on the twenty-eighth, folks, because we've been waiting for the engineer on a number of orders and he's ready to go and we have our public hearings. You want it on the twenty-eighth? I'll put it on the twenty-eighth. No member of the committee, zero members of the committee have called me, emailed me. Sat in the room and said to me, Linda, Linda, we got to get this going. None, zero. So for them to sit here tonight and say, we've asked, we've tried, is flat out fantasy. You show me the emails you sent me if you claim you did because they don't exist. Thank you.
Counselor Puelo.
All right, just do things real quick, Mr. President. Are we just going to keep allowing people to have side comments or are we going to tell them to, to please be quiet? Are we just going to keep allowing that?
Tell me to be quiet.
So. Yeah, there we go. Can you tell them to?
One, I didn't see any side comments because I've been following the readings and stuff.
I just, yeah, all right. Well, yeah, I just don't understand the disrespect from certain people, but just really quickly, I, I had to address the gaslight comment. Be proud, be proud of your vote, you know, don't say things like gaslight. Be proud of your vote. The residential rate could have been lower and it wasn't because of the vote that you took, you know, be proud of that. Rents went up, tax rates went up. Be proud of that.
Counselor Malavales wants to speak for a third time.
That's my last one.
So motion to allow him to speak.
Motion to allow.
Second.
All those in favor?
All those, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, my understanding, and anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, but any tax rate that was proposed that evening was going to raise the tax rate for the people of Holyoke. Regardless of what the rate was. So that's where my gaslight, I'm proud of my vote. I, I was the one that suggested to vote for that. Thank you.
Anyone further?
Point of information, higher than they could have been, higher than they could have been. Key words. Thank you.
So, all right, all right. Stay focused on what's before us. So right now, there is a motion to take up. It's forty-five, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, then late file E and F and remove them, well, one would be remove those from committee. And then E and F would be to take up the late files with them. We're all on the same page? All right. Or you can separate the two. I mean, E and F, I think it was more for getting the information. You could say E and F because they're late files, you could receive them. Or if you wanted to vote to take up final action, you can do it that way as well. I'm not sure how you guys want to separate them.
I suppose technically E and F should be a different because they're not currently in committee. So if you're, if the, if the, it sounds like we're going to take a vote to remove those other items from committee, right?
So why don't we leave E and F on the side?
Make that a separate vote?
Make a separate vote just so we don't get confused by it. So forty-five, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four and sixty-five. The motion was to take them from committee that was seconded. So we'll have the clerk call the roll to remove them from committee. If you vote yes, you're voting to remove them from committee.
Jordan?
No.
Maldonado-Balas?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy-Rumbeletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
No.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
No.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Givner?
Yes.
Nine nays, four nays.
So nine votes, you removed it from committee. So the motion would be to. Refer to legal to put into legal form.
You're going to have to suspend the rules to do that. We have a rule that requires that only the ordinance committee can request something be placed into legal form.
Hence, once again, you'd need nine members to vote for that.
That's right.
So that is, is that?
Someone going to make that motion to suspend the rules to, and by the way, there's. I don't know. I guess this is.
Motion to suspend the rule so we can send it to the legal department, um, and to get into legal form for our next full council meeting in two weeks.
Is there a second?
Second.
So that was seconded.
Under discussion, what happens when it comes back? Are we going to have amendments or we're just, or is that it? Like maybe there's two thirds in here that are just all in favor of this? So there's no feedback from the counselors at this. You're asking, because normally at ordinance, as you know, the ordinance committee would discuss the matter. They would say, this is what we recommend. And then they would tell the law department to do this. This is. By the way, the mayor's name is never mentioned in here. It just says, uh, based on a prior employment experience, but who's making the decision? You know, we, we discussed it that it would be the mayor, but are you giving them adequate? Are you just telling them they get to write it up how they want? I don't know. But in committee, again, we would have discussed the exact wording. So what exactly are you asking them to put into legal form? Just what it says on the paper?
It would be the orders for sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five and forty-five, forty-five is our.
Just as they're written.
And I do believe. There was a.
So.
Uh, legal draft form at one point on it.
There has point of order.
Hold on, Counselor Malavales had a question.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I guess my motion is like we've done in every other ordinance based on this, on the discussion that we've been having today and has been brought up in ordinance. Can the legal department have legal form ready for us in two weeks based on those collective discussions that we've had over the last six months?
Did you want to ask legal that?
No, that's the motion. What does? The motion is that legal form is created based on the discussions that we've been had, have been had around this topic, just like we've been doing with.
That's how you're proposing it. I, I see what you're saying, but now Counselor Vak.
So as a point of order, if we're going to, and it looks like it's already out, so it looks like it's going to go this way. So I would like to offer an amendment that there be no vacation leave that exceeds thirty days after twenty-five plus years as currently exists in the PSA. And I would offer that as an amendment to item sixty-two.
Second. So motion was to amend, uh, it was seconded, under discussion for that amendment.
So under the PSA, the current benefit is twenty to twenty-five years, twenty-five days, twenty-five years or more, thirty days. And I am suggesting that we should not create any benefit that is in excess of another benefit that currently exists for employees of the city. That is my amendment.
All right. So that was seconded for the amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Nay.
Well, I heard two nays, so I heard three.
Hand vote.
Well, maybe a little bit more discussion because it sounds like if only five people voted that people don't have enough information. What, if I understand it correct?
Counselor Jordan.
I apologize. Is what you're saying, Counselor Vak, that the proposal would be to mirror what the PSA is?
Correct.
Okay, so that's what you're getting is basically the argument has been, give us what PSA is getting. So that's, if that's the proposal, then at least you've got something to work with.
Counselor McGivern.
DPW supervisors are forty-two days plus. Forty-two days after plus twenty.
Yeah, but even the P is, uh, Mr. Chairman?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm just making a point. I think I'm trying to do this as I'm looking. You know, if we're going to compare contracts, you know, why don't we compare all of them?
Counselor Jordan.
Right, well, um, I'll have my sheet back. Um. I think the argument is these largely are department heads. And they would be comparable to the professional su, this is the argument that was made in committee effectively, was that I want what the professional supervisors has. This is mo, the bulk of the other department heads. Okay? I mean, by that argument, if we're going to compare it to the police, to the fire department, to, I mean. Nobody has the forty-two day one. Um, so I think the argument, at least in committee, it's not an argument I supported, but the argument was match with the PSA was, was given. So they don't feel, you know, that it was less than.
Mr. President?
Counselor Rivera.
Just to that point, I, I, I don't necessarily think that's what the argument was. That was, I think the intent of the argument was for them to come to us. To provide them with the necessary tools to be able to hire someone effectively, um, within the timing that they needed to. And they couldn't because they, they tried to and people were not applying or if not turning down the offers due to what it is. So if they took a, a PSA, um, salary item or whatever you want to call it, as a comparison to come to us, to, to try to argue that, then I get what you're saying. But at the end of the day, if you're really paying attention to what they're asking of us, it's really for, for us to provide them with the necessary tools so they could do their jobs effectively, efficiently. That's, that's the point I got out of most of the meetings. Like, yeah, if you go ahead and you look into what their, like, specific PSA ar, argument or whatnot. But for me, it sounds like, please help us do our jobs. Um, because right now it's very difficult for us to do our jobs in hiring because of the system that we have in place. So. If you want to split hairs, I guess, but generally the idea is please help us, right? To provide the services to the best of our abilities. Um. Thank you.
I, I believe there was also, um, I think what you're trying to say is that there was the PSA was the guideline. You can't just leave it blank and say, well, whatever, there's got to be some guideline.
There you go. Thank you for speaking for me. That's it.
Right. And then I think what you're pointing out is they wanted an opportunity and I think this does exist in the PSA that you could negotiate, I believe, for up to one extra week. Based on your background or your, all these different things. So I believe there was that opportunity. Um.
All right. So on the floor is an amendment to change the, was it the twenty-year and thirty-year? Counselor Vak, just so we're back on the same page?
Yes. But I mean, I think it would be simpler to just say to have the leave policy mirror the PSA leave policy. It'd be simpler.
And that was seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
Show of hands. If you're in favor, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. So that does not pass that amendment. Anyone further? Counselor Vak.
So I'd offer amendment to cap the vacation days at twenty-five rather than adding five more.
Second.
Motion is to cap it at twenty-five. They're seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
I'd say the noes have that one. So on the floor is to receive, refer to legal, should then have it put into legal form for next meeting.
Under discussion.
Counselor Vak.
I, so this appears that it will pass and go to legal for legal form. I just hope all of my colleagues remember the next time a department head comes in and says, I need more staff. Because the people aren't available for enough hours to get the work done when they're off for three plus months a year. This is really irresponsible government, in my opinion, but majority rules.
Counselor Rivera.
I don't agree on that comment. I am one that I like my vacations. I, I go on vacations. I am the director of operations. I've been a legal assistant. Been working for a lot of years and I go on vacation three to four times a year. Before I go on vacation, I do my job. When I come back, my job is done. So I don't agree with the last comment.
Alright, so, motion is to refer this to legal, in order to have it for the next meeting.
Suspend the rules to refer it to the law department.
I wanna offer another amendment on a different order.
Which one?
Um, on the order relative to giving credit for additional paid vacation time depending on previous experience. I wanna, I just wanna clarify, I don't think it's necessarily an amendment. I just wanna clarify that only the mayor has that authority, and that the legal form would reflect that, just for clarity.
That's item sixty-four.
Correct.
Okay. And we'll take that into consideration. Alright. Any much further? Alright, so, clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to suspend rules, send it to legal to be put in final form. Jordan?
No.
Maltonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
No.
Israel Rivera?
See.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Bacon?
No.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Gibner?
Yes.
Nine nays, four nays. Vote or approve those. This puts us back to item communications, so that'd be three, do I take up three, four, and five as a package?
We'll take three, three, four, and six.
Uh, that's what I meant, three, four, and six. I apologize.
Suspend rules three, four, and six.
Motion to suspend rules, take up three, four, and six a package.
Reappointments.
Opposed, three appointments, uh, for the Conservation Commission, Mr. Dodge, Bowler, and where's the other, Dr. John, uh, all for a three-year term, looks expires February one, twenty-twenty-six. Motion would be to grant the reappointments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Uh, five is an appointment to the Historical Commission.
Received, send to public service.
That was the public service. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Seven is the minutes of the meeting for January seventeenth.
Receive and adopt.
Motion is to receive and adopt. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eight is, um, from the law department, from Mike Bissonette, for elected official retirement board. Motion would be to.
Receive, refer to public service.
Refer to public service. All those in favor?
By the way, since we're under that, can I ask some questions for the committee?
Sure.
Okay. Couple things. In the opinion, it alludes to legal opinions from PARAC. It alludes to legal opinions from Attorney Gibson for the Retirement Board. It alludes to a request to the Ethics Commission that the President made. Can we get copies of these documents, so that we can see what the opinion is based on? Like, you're missing all these documents. It just says, these things were said. Well, what did it say? Right, those should all be attached, because apparently the law department is saying they reviewed all these things, okay? Second, uh, point is, there's no.
I'll second that motion to, uh.
Can we have, yeah, can we have the supporting documentations that are referenced in the, in the opinion? Um, and then the next question I wanted to point out was, there's no discussion whatsoever in the opinion about, for example, I don't know, section fourteen of the Charter, which says that counselors will not participate in any of the executive or administrative functions of the city? That's never mentioned. It's not even discussed. Like, okay, well, we, we, normally in a legal opinion, you review all the legal issues at hand, right? And if something perhaps speaks against your position, you do what is called essentially, um, differentiating, right? You'll say that, well, that doesn't apply in this fact pattern, so therefore, you discuss it and deal with it, right? So you essentially diffuse that argument. Here, and I've noticed this in the other opinion, like, for example, only discusses city law, never mentions relevant, on-point state laws, and this opinion doesn't even discuss the Charter. Just says, because they discussed two sixty-eight A, that means, well, that trumps all issues related to the Charter or anything. Well, by the way, it wouldn't, okay? Because the Charter is adopted by the state legislature, right? That's why you can't amend the Charter without approval of the state legislature, right? Ordinances, absolutely, those are trumped by state law, but not necessarily the Charter. And though, and you can be more restrictive, and there's no discussion to differentiate section fourteen in this opinion. The law department should address that. Um, but, again, we'll take that all up in committee, so we got two now for legal opinion, so we'll make it legal opinion night at some point when the chairman's ready, and, uh, we'll, we'll take it up there. But those are just some of the observations, but it'll be good to have the supporting documents, so I can do my homework. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. President?
Yeah. Counselor Barley.
Thanks. Uh, I don't know if we need a, can, do we, do we still suspend rules that you participate in debate, or you just participate like a blanket rule? Because we used to touch the suspend rules to do that.
Yeah, you'd suspend rules to do that.
Uh, I'm just gonna make a motion to just allow City Council President to address us on this matter.
Second.
Does he want to?
If, if you want, I, I mean, I, I give a choice, so I think you gotta take a vote on that. Just think, if you don't wanna address it, you don't have to.
For what?
Um, just it, well, I guess we're not gonna take a vote on it then, so, um, in the fifth paragraph, uh, tied, Mr. Mr. President, says, uh, Counselor McGee himself contacted the State Ethics Board for advice on the matter. Um, following their guidance, he submitted voluntary disclosure to the mayor and the city clerk. So I would, I would just add to, uh, Kevin's motion that we, that we get the voluntary disclosure. And also, I just wanted to get a little more detail, whether or not the president, uh, when the president contacted the State Ethics Board, and was the advice oral or written? If it was written, I'd like to see a copy. If it was oral, I'd like a summary of it. And I, and I think that'll help us flush it out. If, if not, if the president doesn't wanna provide that, and the president doesn't have to, I'd like the president's permission, uh, for me to contact the State Ethics Board, uh, directly. Well, if you're good, if you wanna enter debate on that, you have to.
No, I'm not entering a debate with you. No.
The, I just wanna make one observation, Mr. President, if I may.
Yep.
Thank you. Is, again, these things, I don't go looking for these opinions. Let me just be crystal clear. These things are coming across my desk, and as a person who's been here for a little while, when these things have rules that go by, like, somebody comes up with a legal opinion that says, ward counselors only need to live in their ward on election day, and after that, you can live wherever you want, as long as you stay in Hoyo. In my opinion, that's not true, okay? That is not what state law says, by the way. That's my personal opinion. So I am forced to address these things, because otherwise, ten years from now, someone's gonna say, oh, you remember that legal opinion back in twenty-twenty-three, when they said you didn't have to live in your ward? That's like taken as gospel. So this is why these rules are way beyond just individual people. It's very important that we have these discussions, so that we're, we're all on the same page as to exactly getting these things precise, okay? That's the point of these discussions, and now, you know, counselor, if you can serve on the retirement board, I guess you can be on the fire commission, and you can be on, you fill in the blank board now. You can be on them all, I guess, simultaneously. So I don't know, that's just a new, just new, you know? So let's discuss what the implications of that are.
Motion refer to committee.
Well, I, so.
That, that's the why for the ask. Thank you.
Counselor Barley.
Yeah, thank you. I, 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 I just wanted to, I just wanna make sure we, we take a vote on, on, on getting the materials that, uh, Kevin asked for, and then, then the materi- then I, since you filed the voluntary disclosure with clerk, I just want that sent to us as well. And then just to my question, uh, did you wanna answer that, Mr. President? When did you contact the State Ethics Board, and what, what, what did they say?
We'll go to committee.
I'd motion refer to committee.
Second. So it's going, going to committee, so motion is refer to committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Back to, is it forty-five? But, uh, it has to go in the legal form. Alright, so motion would be needed to suspend the rules to allow, uh, Mike Bissonette from the legal department to, he's asking a question about number forty-five. So suspend the rules to allow Mike to address something?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Mike? I, I guess I'm kinda confused of what you're asking.
Forty-five, if I understand it correctly, it's the same, same procedure as the council when they voted to authorize the mayor to, uh, offer the max salary to the Director of Public Works. So this is not an ordinance change, uh, this is simply authorization, and that can be passed directly on a majority vote. There's no, uh, uh, legal form required for that. It's just an authorization.
So, so forty-five, the vote should be to authorize, to allow the mayor to go above, correct?
Yes.
Alright, so motion would be to reconsider our actions on forty-five.
Discussion?
Because it's not going to legal form. Counselor Jordan?
It's a change in the salary schedule, which is an ordinance. This has already been discussed, and when we did the DPW, as everybody else, you have a range, it's in the ordinance. You're on, you're not allowed to exceed that, with absent an ordinance change. Therefore, since it's an ordinance change, it needs to be put into legal form to make the ordinance change.
Mike?
I'll refer you to the tape, Counselor, on what the council did on that one. Or the man.
Okay. Well, my understanding is, we passed an ordinance change for the DPW superintendent, um, several months, a couple of months ago.
He did for his title.
Nope, we did it also.
Title, sir.
I think if you look back, Michael, you'll notice that we also passed an ordinance change to allow them to go beyond the range, to go beyond the mid-range for him. Take, take, I think when you do the research on it, you'll see, a couple of months ago, we took care, we did an ordinance change here for that.
Just wait a second, please.
But.
Counselor Bacon.
So, and I would just note that it was also a sunset provision, that once the position was filled, it ended.
That's right. We put an extra caveat into it, but you'll also notice, but here's the good news from the perspective of those that wanna push this all along. We already suspended the rules, so you can go and do it, and if you don't need to do it, you don't need to do it, so you're covered either way, between now and the next two weeks.
Counselor Bacon.
Under suspension of rules, I, um, while we have Attorney Bissonette, I would just like to ask a couple of questions relative to the special circumstances on this position. So it has been put forth in the public here, that the reason for it is that there were a number of applicants for this position that could not be hired because of the pay that was offered. Could you provide that information to the council? We have no documentation to that effect. And that was the special circumstance that existed in part for the DPW Executive Director.
Well, as to the testimony that the committee took concerning the director's salary was oral. There was a comparison provided in writing of other DPW.
No, no, no. Excuse me. Let me clarify.
As has been done in this case.
Correct, correct. But I'm speaking relative to this position.
Anything else?
It, it has been stated that a number of applicants applied.
Paralegal position?
Correct.
I'll be to provide you with some background, if you care for some.
Yes, please.
Back when, uh, Ball were in as city solicitor, there was not a paralegal on the staff. Uh, some of you may recall, there was one staff attorney at that time, she left soon after. I'm not quite sure if that had anything to do with me coming on board, but that's a, a little bit after I
Oh, here it goes.
Were paralegal until December, so from April through December, city attempted to hire. Attorney Ball interviewed eight candidates, um, and was unable to hire anyone at the salary. The mayor, Garcia, raised the salary in his proposed budget, which the city council, uh, and we are grateful for, adopted that. Even at the new range, uh, it was difficult to find someone. We found, uh, pretty incredible talent to come in and work for us, um, and of course, uh, the mayor snatched her way to become the Assistant Purchasing Director. Uh, so she's doing great, but, uh, she wasn't worth it. So I would, we, we have not, uh, been able to hire someone at the current salary range. I believe the current number of offers is five. Uh, we had another interview that was canceled today, uh, because the person got a better paying job, so, whether it's urgent or not is up to the council to decide, but certainly that's authorization she's looking for, to be able to make the offer, only up, uh, to the max.
Thank you.
Alright, so, with that, I, I, I do believe, Mike, the way it was voted and sent to you, um, you'll have to see if you have to put it in legal form or not, because there seems to be debate on that, so you'll have to get back to us on that. With that, we are off to.
I believe we're on number nine, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. President.
Which would be.
Yes.
Uh, from the auditor, which is a list of disability retirements as of February twenty.
To committee on finance.
So to finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Uh, ten is the Board of Assessors, the tax rate.
Motion to make, receive.
Motion is to receive, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The twelve is from Alicia Zoller, which would be the.
Eleven?
Eleven.
Uh, sorry, eleven. So that would be the letter to the Governor Healy regarding two orders that were adopted on.
Receive.
Motion to receive.
I have a copy of those, please.
Copy to Counselor Jordan.
Yeah, Mr. President, if we're gonna, I think we're gonna have Velez and, uh, Mrs. Duffy into the committee, so why don't you send us DGR, okay?
DGR, so receive, send to DGR, copy to Counselor Jordan, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twelve is then from Alicia Zoller.
DGR as well.
That would go to DGR, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thirteen is from Chief Pratt, which is an update, uh, an order filed by Counselor Puelo regarding, uh, the motor vehicle accident for the mayor. That would be referred, received and referred to. Finance.
What's, what's the council wants to do with it?
Uh, yeah, we can send it to finance, sure.
Finance?
Clarification? Well, what do we wanna do with it in finance?
Yeah, I, I.
I mean, you can send it to.
What do you wanna do with it in?
Send it to public safety. We'll have a conversation about it.
Have a conversation, I mean.
Alright, so.
Can we send a copy to the mayor too, please? Maybe get his comments on it?
So do you want it in public safety?
Yep, so moved.
Alright, so public safety.
I'll take it up next, I mean, the, the next meeting we have, too.
Alright, all those in favor?
Can I, actually, I had one info request, though. They get, I did read this, as I read all these items. Um, I did notice, uh, there was only the information related to the damage to our vehicle. I did not see any of the insurance payout information for the damage done to the parked car that was hit. Can we get that as well, from whomever is assembling the information? It did seem that the report was incomplete.
Alright, so we'll ask for that. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Then fourteen is, uh, the audit.
Received to finance.
To finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Fifteen is the fire commission minutes for December twenty-ninth.
Motion to receive. Receive.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Sixty, uh, from, uh, notice for a meeting for proposed marijuana transportation business at one. That'd be ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Seventeen, uh, various establishments, annual reports, that's ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Petitions. We do have a renewal for eighteen, which would be the home occupation, uh, for nail salon at seven-seven-eight Homestead Ave.
Motion to approve if all fees are paid.
With any pre-existing conditions?
Second.
Maintained.
So everything is caught up on taxes, or not caught up, but just paid. So motion would be receive and grant the renewal. So motion be receive and grant the renewal. Clerk will call, if you vote yes, you're voting for the renewal of the home occupancy with the same conditions.
Yes.
Maldonado Velas?
Yes.
McGee? McGivern?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Thank you.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one? Nineteen is a special permit extension
Ordinance.
For one-ten winter, send that to ordinance?
Ordinance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And the last one, twenty, is a new special permit for auto body repair at
DGR.
DGR.
Motion is to DGR, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. President's report, a few things. February thirteenth at five thirty will be at the senior center for the ARPA money and the you know, the mayor going over those funds. February seventeenth, here at city hall, will be employee recognition day, of which what they did last time was have a breakfast here. Everyone here is invited.
When was that again, please?
That is seventeenth, St. Patrick's Day.
Thank you.
It's a Friday. City Hall dedication to celebrate the historic one hundred and fifty years. The dedication at city hall will be Thursday, April sixth, at three PM. In the community, and it'll be upstairs in the ballroom. Viewpoint screening, which is the video that was done with Dennis Quaid, it was started by then-mayor Murphy. That is going to be February ninth, the screening of that, I do believe it's at five thirty. And then the police audit report will be in by the end of this week and shared to us.
Very good.
So those are the updates from the mayor and what we have.
We'll get a PDF version of that, right?
Yeah.
I'm assuming, of the audit? Okay, excellent.
So with that
Where's the viewpoint screening gonna take place, if you know?
I thought it was with Aaron Vega.
Oh, with Aaron?
Is it there, is that the location, or?
Gateway, Gateway. Okay, thank you.
Alright, so we're off to ordinance, twenty-one. Committee on ordinance, a special permit application for Evergreen Industries, one cabot, to operate marijuana cultivation establishment. Have considered, saying recommend that the be adopted with the following conditions. One, that the owner of the building pay commercial property tax rate to the extent by federal, state, and local law during the permit. That the business retain a minimum of thirty percent of Holyoke residents for non-security jobs, that higher preference. Number three, be given to security personnel who are retired, holyoke police officers, or retired members of a police department who now live in the city. No consumption allowed on-site, the hours of operation set by city ordinance. Six is the applicant must abide by mass general law and guidances with regards to cannabis control. Seven, that petitioner applicant shall conform with the city health and law rules and regulations. And eight, the progress has not been, occurred within two years of issuance of special, an extension shall be required. So motion is to
So the motion is to receive and adopt the committee report and grant the special permit?
Motion is receive, adopt, under discussion, Counselor Bacon.
So this was a very complete application. There was very little for us to have to do, other than our routine follow-up of any open items. And it was so complete, we didn't have to add any other conditions than the standard ones. And it's a unanimous recommendation from the committee.
Seeing no one further, the clerk will call, if you vote yes, you're voting for the special permit with the conditions as read.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velas?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Abstain.
Oh, yeah, abstain, sorry. Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Not here.
Not here.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner? Eleven yeas, one what was that? Oh, eleven yeas, one abstain.
Your vote, you approve that. Twenty-one B, committee on ordinance for the first special permit application for Infuse Element LLC, one cabot. Recommend it be adopted with the same conditions that were read just last time.
So the motion is to receive and adopt the committee report and grant the special permit?
Motion is for you adopt, grant the special permit, under discussion, Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this was a little bit different, because it's a marijuana manufacturing establishment. And we had a little bit of an interesting discussion around the manufacturing aspect. And they made a point of noting that they will not be using solvents. And then as we discussed it further, we came to understand that if they ever did move to using that, which is a much more involved process, that they would need to come back in for an amended special permit. And so the committee, after getting that clarified, is recommending with the standard conditions as usual. And again, it was a unanimous recommendation.
Seeing no one further, clerk, oh, Counsel Rivera?
I would just like to add that I support, I'm gonna vote for this business and support it. The people that are behind this business are residents of Holyoke. And that's technically what we're looking for with regards to these, the cannabis industry and the businesses that are opening up. It would be great to continue to have more Holyokeers opening up businesses to help us employ more Holyokeers at a larger rate than thirty percent. But that's where it's at right now. So just speaking out in support of this, this particular project, and the other ones too, to be honest, they were all pretty good. But yeah, thank you.
Seeing no one further, clerk will call, if you vote yes, you're voting for this special permit.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velas?
Yes.
McGee? McGivern?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Twelve yeas, one abstain.
Your vote, you approve that one. Twenty-one C, committee on ordinance for the referred, an order that an ordinance is created for pavement cut moratorium proposed for new section seventy-eight dash fifty-nine, recommend that be adopted. Motion be receive, adopt.
So the motion is to pass the first reading?
Pass the first reading, under discussion, Counselor Bacon.
And this order and the next one came to us from our city engineer. And he's making an effort to formalize practices that have already been in place, but to make it clear by having language in our ordinances. So it's really saying that if we repave a road, that it will not be cut within the five years of the repaving, which sort of defeats the whole purpose of improving the road condition. And we were assured by the engineer that this is the practice that they already follow, and he was just really codifying it.
So motion is to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is to pass the second reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained, the clerk will call, if you vote yes, you're voting for twenty-one C.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velas?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. Twenty-one D, committee on ordinance for the referred, in order that the sewer use policy be revised to include recent requirements for the environmental protection agency. This would modify chapter ninety, article three, sewers, section ninety-eighty-one, definitions ninety-eighty-three for the use of public sewers. Recommend that be adopted.
Thank you, Mr. President. And it also includes all of division two, which is ninety through one-eleven and ninety through one-twenty-two. So this was a situation where it sort of looked worse than it actually was. But what the engineer wanted to do, and this is part of the consent decree between the city and the federal government, so there were time considerations, which is why we took it up soon. As part of that consent decree, they wanted to see us spelling out the federal regs in our local ordinances to be more clear about enforcement and implementation going forward. And so that is why you see the references to all these parts, and the legal form was provided to us.
Alright, so motion is to pass the first reading? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is to pass the second reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained, clerk will call, if you vote yes, you're voting for twenty-one D.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velas?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner? Unanimous vote.
That one, off to finance, twenty-one A. Committee on finance for the referred, an order that two dash one thirty-eight, E nine B, fire department station revolving fund be updated to remove the language payments received for action ambulance, recommend it be adopted. Counselor McGivern?
Let's make, uh, make a second, you do have Somebody's trying to get in. Someone's got their TV going at home, is that Belveda?
Alright, so Counselor McGivern?
Sorry, an a motion to adopt, the committee recommends, this is under a proposal by you, Counselor McGee, as you know. It's mostly a generic change, action ambulance is no longer part of the city planned, and they have been replaced by Cattaldo. This is a revolving fund that allows the money that the ambulance company pays in for lease, particularly the lease of the South Street building itself into a fund that can be turned around and put into different repairs and maintenance and improvements to the building itself. Would be, as suggested, that it would be more of a generic new language to allow for this to take place, the committee is in agreement.
Alright, so motion is to receive, adopt, to change the language, removing action ambulance, to make it generic, to say ambulance provider. Clerk will call, if you vote yes, you're voting for the language chain of the revolving fund.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velas?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner? Unanimous vote.
You approve that one. Twenty-one B, committee on finance for the refer, in accordance to master and law, forty-four, section fifty-three, council accept the provisions of the Markhart Ford equipment donation. Nine thousand eight hundred ninety dollars, fifty-two cents. Motion receive, adopt, pass first reading, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think as everybody knows, that gifts to the city are treated almost like grants, which are almost treated like, in a sense, appropriations allowing the gifts to be accepted and/or money to be spent. Very generous donation by Markhart Ford, as we know, one of the more tremendous corporate citizens of this, of the city, and just a great family. The donation includes one hundred and twenty pairs of extraction gloves worth five thousand thirty-eight dollars. Two right, right pack upgrade, upgrades worth three thousand six hundred. Twelve picklets for tech, technical rescue, which is four hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-two cents. And one rescue forty-two inch ripper for laminated glass, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Totalling to nine thousand eight hundred ninety dollars, fifty-two cents. The committee recommends that we allow the fire department to accept this gift.
Alright, so motion is to receive, adopt, pass first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Just pass the second reading, clerk will call, if you vote yes, you're voting for twenty-two B.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velas?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner? Unanimous vote.
So twenty-two C, committee on finance for the refer, here, city council accept the provisions of the health and urban forestry, thirteen thousand five hundred. No match, motion receive, adopt, pass first reading, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our conservation director, Yoni Glazglove, was before us. This grant would allow for the continuing efforts to do the inventory of trees. This particular phase would be out in Rock Valley, looking at over eight hundred trees, taking inventory of their condition, taking inventory of their existence, continued existence. And certainly, this walks into the efforts of replanting trees and making sure that our, our tree cover canopy is continued to be, to be replaced as we go along. Very important to the environment, very important to the city of Holyoke aesthetics and so forth. Committee recommends that this no-match grant be, the conservation department be allowed to use it.
Further, seeing no one further, motion is passed first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Pass the second reading, clerk will call, if you vote yes, you're voting for this grant. Twenty-two C.
Sorry about that, Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velas?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
She's out of the room, just by the way. Alright, with that, you approve, you approve that one. Twenty-two D, committee on finance for the referred, the fiscal year twenty-three firefighter safety equipment grant, twenty-four thousand nine hundred seventy-eight dollars, no match. Motion is to receive, adopt, pass first reading, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, the, this grant comes through the office of the governor and is an important grant that we receive almost annual, but it allows the fire department to buy some necessary equipment that is not part of our capital, outweigh budget. It's no match, they, their proposal to use it this year is for two battery power comprehension fans themselves. Two sets of hands for the forklift and the, the when you're extracting a person from, I'm losing my thoughts here, from, from a car wreck, these are special gloves to protect firefighters' hands themselves. And eight sets of tactical gear for firefighters. We recommend that this grant be allowed to be used for the purposes as proposed by the fire department.
So seeing no one else, motion is passed first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is pass the second reading, clerk will call, if you vote yes, you're voting for twenty-two D.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velas?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Cuello?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Givner. Unanimous vote.
Your vote, your approval that one? Counselor McGivern, you want to take up J, H, I, K, and L as a package? They're all complied with? Or for a reason, separate them?
I'm sorry, I...
J, H, I, K, L.
Yeah.
That's it. They all say complied with.
We got E and F first, though, if we could.
Okay.
I, I just, he threw me off, you know, I'm in order here.
I know, I, I was trying to help you. That's why I asked first.
He doesn't let me jump around like that.
All right. Killing me, killing. So here, where's E? E seems to be missing.
E's the Student Awareness, uh, Fire Education.
All right, so I'll just do this from the agenda. I'll find, it's probably clipped to something else. 22E, uh, Command Finance, uh, hereby accept the provisions of the Student Awareness, uh, $7,958 no-match grant, recommend to receive, adopt, pass first reading.
Thank you, Mr. President. Annual grant always put to good use by the Fire Department, uh, including Sparky, and, uh, we actually were told who the new Sparky is, but the Finance Committee was told they would not reveal the source of the firefighter who currently is in the Sparky uniform. This grant goes, and, and it goes far beyond. Student education is very, awareness is very important. Uh, our Fire Department goes into schools, goes a number of different community, uh, activities and brings the message of fire awareness, fire education, and safety to, uh, to all students and to all of our young people across the board. A great grant, and, uh, we support that the Fire Department be allowed to use this year's, uh, this year's portion.
All right, see no one, oh, Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, I just want to state, it's a very important grant, um, not just for the students, but also for the seniors. Um, I happened to be, a few months back, where Lieutenant Pelcher gave a, a one-hour talk about senior safety, about fire alarms and, and stoves and, uh, exits and entrances, uh, to get out of, uh, a, a building. But, um, you know, they're, they're, also they're doing, um, you know, smoke detectors, seal, um, detectors that are very important for people that, uh, you know, especially this time, the wintertime, that, uh, people are allowed to, to have them come out and inspect their house and, and to try to get a, you know, I, I think they're free of charge, the, um, smoke detectors in their homes.
So, motion is passed first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion passed the second reading. Clerk Coleroy felt yes, you're voting for E.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Cuello?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Givner. Unanimous vote.
Your vote, your approval that one. 22F, Command Finance, a transfer of 5,000 from lieutenants to captains. Motion is to receive, adopt, pass first reading. Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, uh, the auditor, the fire chief, and the mayor recommends that we allow this transfer. It's actually a correction of a error that occurred, uh, during the budget process itself. Uh, the mayor took full responsibility for this, was just a miscommunication, and it was only picked up, uh, as we got into the fiscal year itself. Uh, because of some retirements and because of some changes in positions, there's enough in the captain's light item, might, with the exception of the additional $5,000, and the surplus is there for the same reason, in the lieutenant's item. Uh, the mayor was present to the committee and asked us to, uh, agree to this transfer.
Anyone further? See no one further? Motion is to pass first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is passed the second reading. Clerk Coleroy felt yes, you're voting for 22F.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Cuello?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Givner. Unanimous vote.
Your vote, your approval that one?
We tell the mayor, $5,000 mistake, it's okay, not too many questions, $5 million mistake might be a few more questions.
That is true. So, H, I, J, K, and L are complied with. Want to take them up as a package?
What about E?
Um, G, G, I think we have to do separate. It's a, the annual, uh, shuffle.
Trying to shuffle them as they're in here. Uh, G is 200, 250,000, uh, E91 Dispatch Patrolman to overtime. Motion is to receive, adopt, pass first reading.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the chief, the mayor was with us. Um, this is a, I, I shouldn't call it a shuffle, but this is a re, the purpose of reimbursement grants are that the city has to pay for salaries, uh, prior, um, to the state reimbursing the salaries themselves. Uh, each year we receive a, a dollar amount that's pretty much in the, in the neighborhood, $250,000, and we're allowed to, uh, use this to pay for E911 dispatchers, uh, some patrolmen, and, and the, um, the purpose of the, and we learned this each year, but this was talked about during the budget hearings themselves. The purpose of the reimbursement this year is to, this month, these monies have been paid, is to take the money from the grant and put it into overtime. So, a lot of our discussion was about the overtime. The, uh, chief did tell us that the, uh, we're running a little bit higher than this year, than last year at this time per pay period. I think we're up to 38,000, close to 40,000 per pay period. A big, or a significant part of that is some of the injured on, or long-term injured on duties. There are some more family medical leaves than usual, and there are some vacancies. Good news is, in the academy, six just came out, and in 11 additional ones, our additional candidates are starting the academy, uh, I mean, may have already started, I think it's this week or next week. But we do recommend the, uh, the use of the, the grant this way, and, I mean, the grant's been used, the use of this surplus to our overtime, which still keeps us under the overtime, total overtime that we had, uh, saw last year. Uh, the chief didn't promise he's going to get through the end of the fiscal year, but he did promise to try.
Counselor Malo Velez?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be quick, just a question. Does this bring overtime over a million dollars at this point? Or is, I know we've done a couple 250s, so I just wanted to get that point of information.
That's a good question. We, we started with... Hi, Counselor, uh, Malo Velez, I'll get you that answer.
Thank you.
Um, I forget the number we started with. This would be the, I'm going by a little bit by memory, his second transfer, second big transfer into the account. Um, and yes, uh, I, I think it's right now more like 850, 900,000, but we're getting there.
Thank you. 250, yeah. Okay. Anyone further? All right, so motion is passed first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion passed the second reading. Clerk Coleroy felt yes, you're voting for the 250,000.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Cuello?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Givner. Unanimous vote.
You want, you approve that one. 22H.
Um, Mr. President, the motion to suspend rules, we can take up a number of these complied with orders.
H, I, J, K, L.
L.
I got it.
And I, I certainly will offer a, a quick explanation on all of them.
Suspend rules, take them up as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? H is that the Finance Committee, uh, order that the mayor be invited in, uh, for the draft of the five-year forecast model. I is Finance Committee has referred, uh, that our auditor review the accounts, uh, for any funds available and departments are available for transfer to DPW snow removal. J is, uh, that the auditor, please provide the City Council a financial summary of how much revenue is generated each department fiscal year 2021, broken down by grant revenue. K is that the request be made to the mayor's office, private current list of businesses that receive ARPA funds. And L is the Community Finance, uh, the auditor for fiscal year 2022 and 23, the pilot payments. Motion is rece, they're all received and that they're complied with. Counselor McGivern.
Thank you. Very quickly, with the, uh, with time, um, in the back of the, uh, my comments here, um, the item, the, the first item was introduced by yourself, myself, just to make sure that we had a presentation of the five-year forecast. A workbook has been, was presented to all of us, uh, back in, uh, mid-January. The workbook was discussed by, uh, both Andrea Turkerson, who is the consultant that, as I think everybody knows, was hired by the city, is working on a number of projects with the mayor and with our own auditor in terms of, uh, forecasting and trying to figure out where we are in terms of revenue forecasting. Uh, five-year period is kind of standard in the industry to look out. Uh, it's a working document. Uh, next year, this five-year, uh, workbook will be taken and adjusted accordingly to what happens or what doesn't happen. If anybody didn't have a chance to, uh, join us or, or watch on Zoom, certainly I, I encourage everybody to, uh, to, to go into the website and go into the, uh, the, uh, the taped of, uh, of this presentation. It was very, very informative, uh, very interesting, and, uh, much quicker than the budget hearing when, when the presentation was made, uh, during the budget hearing. It was, it was actually kind of stuck to the numbers. Uh, Counselor Jordan, um, asked a number of, uh, of, uh, questions in, in terms of where we're going in certain areas, and, uh, especially in the wastewater treatment plant and, uh, sewer fund area. We're going to be having some upcoming meetings, uh, as soon as we get all the information is together, and we're giving some time to our new superintendent. Um, the Counselor Bacon order was complied with. Uh, it goes back to 2021. It kind of reflects, hopefully not as bad this year, but we certainly want the auditor always to be looking for funds when, when it comes to emergencies like, um, snow removal, when it's, an account that often goes towards deficit before the, uh, the season is over with. And, uh, the, the other orders where we were waiting for, um, some of the, uh, some of the reports to come in, uh, I guess the Chair of Finance missed this one, but Counselor Jordan's order, that the auditor give us a financial summary of revenue for each department. This is not tax revenue, but other revenue that the departments, uh, generate or receive. A very comprehensive, uh, report was provided by the auditor. Um, somehow this was, was missed, uh, and I'll take the blame, but we did get it, and we just wanted to, uh, publicly acknowledge that, that the, uh, and I know everybody got it by email, because I, I saw the list of where it went to. And then I think it's Counselor Pelo's request that the mayor provide us with the list of businesses for the, uh, the ARPA funding through the city, and, uh, certainly that, that list was provided, very interesting, and, uh, you know, a number of businesses that received help through the first phase of ARPA. The second phase, I believe, is underway, or, actually, we're about to start the third phase, if I'm correct, but very interesting, the way the money is used, and certainly, uh, we, uh, we appreciate the list being provided to us for transparency. Uh, no votes are necessary, other than the fact that the, uh, they've been complied with, and, uh, certainly be happy to answer questions if there are any.
Counselor Jordan?
Uh, yes, and while I did not vote to give the auditor more vacation time tonight, I will just say that she's doing an extremely thorough and thoughtful job, and it does not go unnoticed. She's super responsive, uh, and she's doing a great job, and I just cannot say how impressed I have been with her. Johnny-on-the-spot with giving information detailed, if you need anything, she's super helpful. Um, thank you, Tanya, you're doing a great job, and it's appreciated. And just on record, we kept a copy of that workbook, five-year forecast workbook in committee, so next year, when it changes, we can compare.
So, the motion is that they're all complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 22M, Community Finance has referred, a second-hand license, uh, for Paper City Fabrics, recommend that the application be returned to the petitioner.
Thank you. This has been sitting in committee for some time, Mr. President, and, uh, the petitioner, the, the actual application doesn't even have the business address on it. We questioned that from the beginning. I, I'm told by our administrative assistant that this is no longer needed. Uh, we can't vote down something, but we certainly can return it to sender, I'm sorry, return it to the petitioner, because it wasn't complete to begin with, and, I don't think it's coming back, because I don't think it's, it's needed, from what I'm told.
All right, Counselor Jordan?
Right. Um, I have spoken to Joseph, who, again, is just the type of person we're trying to get into the city, extremely entrepreneurial, uh, a great person, a hard-working, smart, uh, young man, and I am told from, that he was told, he's all set. If for some reason it's not all set, please let us know, so that we can, because we're sending this out, not because we weren't supportive, but because we were told he's all set. So, if for some reason that's not the case down the road, please let us know, because we wanted to help. Yep. Thank you.
So, motion is refer it back to the petitioner. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public safety, no public service, uh...
24.
Oh, no, public service, sorry.
24.
24A, Community Public Service has referred, an order from the mayor, uh, letter appointing, uh, Ms. Flanagan, 38 Jeffren Street, served as a member of the, uh, HEDIC. Uh, this will be a term of three years, expires June 30th, 2025. Recommended that be confirmed. Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, motion to confirm the appointment. We had, uh, Ms. Flanagan in here, um, on our last meeting, and, uh, very capable applicant. She, uh, very much involved in, uh, in government and different boards. She's been on the, uh, Leadership Board for the Pioneer Valley, um, involved in PTO in the schools. Uh, she was born and raised here, has two children, and most of you got her resume. It's, uh, amazing, Fordham, Fordham University, a very good, uh, businessperson, um, and I think it's an exceptional appointment, uh, to this very important board.
Anyone further? So motion is to confirm the appointment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Twenty-four B. Public Service referred in order that the city council invite a representative from Soljron as well as Veteran Services Director to discuss support services for veterans who failed to meet the requirements of Soljron. Recommend it's been complied with. Counselor Tomlin.
Yes, we had the Buckley family in here, Matt and Bruce Buckley from Pittsfield from Soljron. This was actually an order filed by Counselor Leacy a few years back and happened to take this out of the committee. We've talked to our Veterans Director, Jesus, and we had about a half hour to 45 minute discussion with them. We got some pamphlets from them, we got some cards. There's a lot of ways that sometimes there's veterans that sort of fall through the cracks and there's ways that we can help them, you know, veterans and their families. So I got a card here. I think I asked Jeff to try to leave on what everybody left, some of the flyers outside in the hallway, but very interesting group. They came down and they actually have some buildings up at the VA Hospital up in Leeds. They got some new buildings that they build for veterans. And Jesus said this is a great organization and they do get funding. I think they got it through the state. And Bruce called me, it wasn't a pass through for the federal government, it's state funding. I think it was like a $500,000 grant. So it was very important and a couple of people had contacted me after that meeting. And actually somebody contacted Mr. Buckley, somebody from Palmer to try to get some assistance. So very great group and hopefully the people can know that there is help out there for veterans that really need some services and their families.
Anyone further? Motion that's been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Twenty-four C. Public Service, order that DPW work on putting up signage welcoming people to Hoyoke at every highway entrance in several different languages. Recommend it's been complied with by referring to the Tourism Advisory Committee. Counselor Tomlin.
Yeah, this was filed by Counsel Rivera and we had, we couldn't get the engineer, I mean the engineer in here, but they did state there's certain areas that you really can't use the different languages. And there was a cost to it too. So we sent it out to the Tourism Advisory Committee and hopefully they can take a look at that. And wherever we can do that, it's a possibility of trying to put that in certain areas, but I guess it can't go on state highways, just certain ones that coming to Hoyoke. So there's a couple that can, that can be put at, but then we got to figure out what type of languages you actually want there. You can exclude a couple, I mean, you said seven, so you know, Tourism Advisory Board, I think will take care of that and look to see that. If there's any questions, you know, we can send, you know, you can ask them.
Mr. President, if I may comment? The idea came from actually driving, I think, into New York or DC and they have it when you go on the highways in like six or seven different languages, mostly the languages of the people that are within that region to kind of represent and show them representation. But if there's a state law that says we can't do that on the highway, I guess I'm talking to the wrong people and I'll find the right people to talk to. Thank you.
No problem.
So this one has been complied with?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Twenty-four D. Committee on Public Service who's referred in order that the Hoyoke City Council encourage all city department heads to provide correspondence to Spanish speaking people in Spanish to extent feasible. The Hoyoke City Council particularly encourages techno letters from the mayor's office, school department, so on, so forth, upon request. Recommend it's been complied with. Counselor Tomlin.
Yeah, we had spoke to, this was filed by, I believe, Counselor Bartley. We talked to the mayor on this issue and they are trying to get many documents as possible translated into Spanish. As you know, we have translators now at our meetings, all of our meetings now in the city council. The school department, I guess, does get a lot of their documents and translate into Spanish. And the mayor says they are working on that, looking at possibly, looking to get somebody to help with the translation and especially documents with the law department and the planning department, license board. It's not an easy thing to do, but it's something that he is working on. And if Counselor Bartley has anything more to say about that, I think it's, we are making progress in that, in that front.
Anyone further? Counselor, okay. So motion that this has been complied with? Oh, sorry, Counselor.
Yeah, I'm glad, if it was Counselor Bartley that filed it, I'm glad he did file the order or whomever filed the order a while back. Because recently I passed by the Parks and Recs Department, they have signs for signups out there, but none of them are in Spanish. I think one of them is now. But before, you're telling people to sign up for baseball, basketball, youth sports, and if someone doesn't understand the language, they're just going to walk by it kind of. So thank you for that.
All right, so this has been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? DG and R. Committee on DG and R who's referred in order that the ambulance come before future DG and R meeting to discuss neighborhood concerns relative to parking upkeep noise on the South Street location. Recommend it's been complied with. Counselor Murphy, Ramboletti.
Thank you. So we had a great meeting. We were joined for this particular order, we were joined by, actually, maybe we could do A and B as a package.
Yeah, so motion to suspend rules, take up A and B as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? B is also DG and R who was referred in order at the City of Hoyoke License Agreement with the ambulance company at 490 South Street. So they want the license agreement. Recommend it's been, recommend that the order is advanced to the city council, so complied with, I guess.
Well, we do need to vote on 25B, I believe.
To accept the license agreement. Okay, I see what it's saying. All right, so.
So we had representatives from Cataldo Ambulance in. We were joined by our fire chief as well. Any license or lease over 30 days does need city council approval, so that's why we were taking this up. But also, the 25A order was filed by Counselor Bartley to have representatives from Cataldo just give us an update as it relates to the concerns of nearby neighbors with the current parking situation, especially on the South Street location. There's been some complaints about, you know, the sirens going off at 3:00 in the morning, might not be as necessary as rush hour. So just a lot of good conversations. Frank from Cataldo did say that, you know, he hears the concerns, will definitely try to keep the city council updated. And the fire chief did talk about the transition from Action Ambulance to Cataldo. And it was a little rocky to start off, but he said that things are running smooth now. So overall, that was a good update from there. And so 25 would be complied with, but 25B does need a vote, I believe.
So any questions on 25A as of right now? If none, motion that's been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Twenty-five D is the license agreement. Any discussion under that? See, none. So the motion is that we receive and adopt the license agreement. Have the clerk call the roll for accepting the license agreement. Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Ramboletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner? Unanimous vote. We approve that one. Twenty-five C, the Committee on DG and R was referred in order that the Hoyoke City Council in accordance with Master Law 30B and Hoyoke current vote, that the city accept the proposal of the sale of surplus property at 297, 301, 303 Elm Street for $25,800. Recommend that this be adopted. Counselor Murphy, Ramboletti.
Thank you. So we were joined by the proponents, Carrie and Arthur Nats, as well as the representatives from the Office of Planning and Economic Development. The proponents are hoping to purchase city properties at 297, 301, and 303 Elm Street. The proposal would be to eventually create 24 to 32 apartment units. The proponents also own the properties that are adjacent to the buildings or to the plots at 287 and 291 Elm Street. And they have also recently purchased the vacant apartment building at 123 Pine Street from the Redevelopment Authority. So we did get an overview of the proposal. The, this is the second time the city has attempted to sell these properties through an RFP. And we really appreciated hearing from the proponents. They actually are local Hoyoke residents. They live in Hoyoke and they have lived here for decades. So we really appreciated hearing from them. The construction itself is dependent on the water infrastructure improvements that are being planned in that neighborhood. And the Water Department Manager did confirm that those improvements will be done in 2024 or 2025. So there is, you know, they're planning for that timeline. I believe that's what I've got.
Anyone further? So motion is to receive, adopt, and accept the proposal on sale of the surplus of those three parcels for $25,800. Clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for that. Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Ramboletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. We approve that one. D, E, and F, do you want to take up as a package you're complied with?
Sure.
All right, so motion to suspend rules, take those up as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? D, DG and R who was referred in order that the city council invite in the representatives from Appalachian Mountain Club and of Boston to future DG and R meeting to discuss the various hiking trails. Recommend that's been complied with. F is DG and R, order that DG and R committee invite in the Chair, Aaron Vega, and other committee members to discuss plans and suggestions for the 150th anniversary. I missed one. Oh, yeah, E, sorry. E, Committee on DG and R who was referred in order that the Whiting Street Reservoir Committee study report, come in for that report. Recommend it's been complied with, all three of them. Counselor Murphy, Ramboletti.
Thank you. So the 25D, we had representatives from the Appalachian Mountain Club come to DG and R and just discuss their various programs and the trails they maintain. For me, I didn't know a lot about them, so it was actually really great to learn what they do. I encourage everyone to check out their website, outdoors.org. Very, they're doing a lot of great stuff. They gave us an update that, you know, they, one of the two trails that they maintain is that run through Hoyoke, the New England National Scenic Trail and the Connecticut River Paddlers Trail. So they're always looking for volunteers to help maintain the trails. And they also do work with Mass Hire, their summer youth job program. So it was just overall a really great update and we appreciate what they do in our community. The next one is for, it was about the Whiting Street Reservoir Committee Study Report. We had a great presentation. This has been a project that has been in the works since 2019. We got the background from my fellow counselors on that. And we all, you know, first and foremost, recognize that Sue Ellen Panich was actually the chairperson. She did a lot to get this study completed. Unfortunately, she passed at the end of last year, but her legacy will always continue. And we just really appreciate all the work that went into this. The goal of the committee was to consider all aspects of the Whiting Street Reservoir to include reviewing costs to maintain and repurpose it for future use, as well as ensuring that reasonable environmental considerations are maintained. So we learned a lot about the reservoir itself and just had the opportunity to ask questions. And the committee had five recommendations that they recommended. And that's in the report, but just to summarize, to, they are encouraging us as the city council to try to ensure long-term protection of the Whiting Street Reservoir, assure availability of the reservoir for future water needs for the city, really encouraging active or passive recreation, enhancing visitor safety and accessibility. They reported that, you know, a lot of the folks who do not live in that immediate neighborhood, there's a lot of people that haven't been to our reservoirs and they're a really valuable resource. They encouraged the city and us to develop a vision statement and specifically the North Hoyoke Master Area Plan to guide the use and protect resources. And, you know, in order, in order to do that, we would hope to have the city council kind of bring to, help bring together just the adjoining property owners, managers, citizens. And they gave us a few recommendations for what we can do to support that. So overall, it was a really great report, thorough, and we really appreciate all the volunteers that helped make that possible.
Anyone further?
Oh, wait, I didn't give you an order update on the 150th, just kidding. The 150th anniversary is this year for our city. And Aaron Vega was with us. He's the, obviously, the Director of Planning and Economic Development, but he is also the committee chair. And so we got a lot of updates on all of the great things that are happening. Our administrative assistant is also on the committee. They are always looking for volunteers to support all of the efforts. They're going to be marketing a lot of events under the umbrella of the 150th anniversary. So everyone should go on to the explorehoyoke.com website and you can add your own events there. And they've got all the events from the, that are happening in the city. The group meets on the first and third Tuesday of the month, so kind of like city council, but not as fun, right, guys? And there is going to be a gala in October, so stay tuned. Nope, all right, I take it back. That has already changed and it's okay. And yeah, share the website. Tell everyone about it. And then as the council president mentioned, April 6th is the dedication, so thank you.
Anyone further? So motion that those are complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There's no charter rules, there's no joint city council school. Onto motions, orders, resolutions. Twenty-eights from Counsel McGivern, Counsel Jordan, order that Director of Office Planning and Economic Development be authorized to provide a flexible work schedule for PSA members. Flexible work schedule shall allow for evening meetings. Flexible schedule will be 35 hours a week requirement. All additional contractual ordinance related to these shall be adhered to.
We see refer to committee, excuse me, ordinance.
Ordinance. All those in favor?
All right. Should we just, should we remove it now?
Why, honestly?
I mean, I supported it. I'm not being totally facetious in that, why not just add this to the other ones, right? Just send it to suspend the rules, send it to the law department, put it into legal form and send it. I mean, honest to God, I mean, we're going to talk about it, we'll have a meeting and then we're just going to do it. So I make a motion to suspend the rules and send it to the law department, add it to the package. Just do it. You don't need a committee meeting.
Motion to suspend the rules to send it off to the legal department?
Second.
There's a second? All those in favor?
Whoa, 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 whoa. What? It's about expediency, man. We got to get it done, baby.
Let's not let the games begin, Mr. President.
It's already begun.
Absolutely.
I support referring this to committee, one of our finer standing committees, the ordinance committee. There is stuff to talk about here in terms of what this is being proposed. You know, flex schedules I think are important. There are a number of people that come into our committees on a regular basis. There are a number of people in these offices that support other commissions and other bodies and still have to get up in the morning and go to work. And flex may be a way to address the lack of the ability to pay overtime, the lack of ability to afford overtime on a regular basis. And I think it's worth a good discussion, not for tonight. I suggest we send it to committee.
I'll second that.
Well, the first one was a motion to approve and send with the package. That was seconded. Now we're doing another motion to send it to committee?
Mr. President?
No, the original motion was referred to committee ordinance, right.
But we amended it.
We said ordinance and before, there was any, hold on, hold on. Before there was any vote, Counsel Jordan made a motion to not go to ordinance, but to take it up as a package.
That's an amendment.
I made a motion to suspend the rules.
I'm just suggesting we go to the original motion, refer to committee.
Well, you got to vote my, I need two thirds voted, so that's probably not going to happen.
Counselor?
If I may. Counselor? I kind of want to refer to, back to what Mr. Bartley said, right? Are we, are we waiting and asking permission to speak or are we just going out and saying what we're saying? Because the motion was made just by saying it. They never asked the president to be able to speak, technically. So if Mr. McGivern asked the president to be able to speak and made a motion, I don't know, can I just go ahead and say motion to this without asking you to speak and do that? And then my motion get, go through? Because if that's the case, that's fine. I just need to know.
No, no. Counsel McGivern made a motion.
Yeah, all right.
And then Counsel Jordan jumped up and said his motion.
Yeah.
So I recognize Counsel Jordan.
Okay, that's fine.
And it was seconded by Counsel Maldonado Velez. So if you want to take up that motion?
I have no issue with it. I just want to know that.
It's a E nine votes to send it off to legal. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No. Well, I think, I had three, he only had two, so three to two, that's two thirds.
You need nine though, I think, right?
I think you need nine. You can do a show of hands if you want.
We had about seven abstentions.
Yeah, a few didn't say anything, yeah.
All right, so show of hands if you want to go at Counsel Jordan's. One, two, three, four. My ears are still good. So that does not pass. Back to the original motion, which is to refer to ordinance.
So you mean we're going to actually have a committee meeting and we're going to go through all the intricate details and ask for a financial prospectus and get into all those details at the cost of departmental?
Come on, man.
I'm just trying to understand, that's all.
Point of order.
I'm learning.
Well, if it gets on the agenda, we will.
All right. The other ones did too.
Order, I know it's, I know it's late, but right now, right now.
We're good, we're good.
Ordinance. All those in favor? All those opposed?
Aye.
We do have finance or financial transfers, so 29, 30, 31, 33.
I think we should go one at a time and I'm going to propose to adopt them on the floor.
We could.
Sure.
33 to 39, and 42 and 43 are all financial requests. I took the two out, which would represent.
Three, Mr. President.
Is there a three?
Take 32 and 40 out and then 41.
41, okay, so I apologize for that. That's why I was getting confirmation.
41? I'll explain 41 when we get to it.
All right, so removing those, so back to 29, 30, 31, 33 to 39. No 41. 42 and 43, motion be, take up as a package.
We save it for committee on finance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those. 29 is Marquette Ford Police Department donation, $10,000. 30 is cannabis stabilization, $202,000 to DPW Main Project. 31 is $26,000 from capital stabilization to equipment recreation. 33 is veteran direct benefits, $3,000 to fiscal year 23 veteran grant. 34 is cannabis stabilization, $399. 34 is cannabis stabilization, $399,000 to DPW Race Street improvements. 35 is cannabis stabilization, $70,000 to Oped Contract Legal Services. 36 is $7,000 from equipment repairment to overtime. 37 is $100,000 cannabis stabilization to Oped Community Benefits. 38 is $150,000 of cannabis stabilization to Oped Municipal Master Plan. 39 is TNC rideshare, $8,788 to other contracted services. 42 is the Veterans Heritage Grant, $26,000, but there's a match of 13 to 38, and $3,000 cash in kind. 43 is the Shannon Grant, so that's for $566,355.26. All those to finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Make a motion to suspend the rules to take 32 and 40 as a package to adopt this evening?
Motion, suspend the rules, take up 32 and 40 as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 32 is from $28,117.37 to injured on duty. That would be police, and that represents, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. 40 is $819.25 from firefighter to injured on duty, that represents one. Motion is receive, adopt, pass the first reading, Counsel McGivern.
Thank you. Vote that we take almost every meeting, just, one is for accounting purposes, injured on duty to take their salary, which they still get, out of the line item known as salary, into an injured on duty just for keeping track of it. We did have the, we did ask the chief at the last finance committee meeting a couple of questions about the report that's coming, and although he seems to be dotting his i's and crossing his t's, it does appear that that report will be coming in soon, so we can have a discussion about some of the long-term impacts on injured on duty. Although, I think what we're looking at, week to week or meeting to meeting, is more, most of it is short-term, but there are a couple that are adding up, so I think we do need to get some answers. But for the purposes of tonight, I'd recommend that we adopt this on the floor.
Anyone further? The motion is pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading. Clerk Paul Roy, if you vote yes, you're voting for those two injured on duty.
Jordine?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
He left.
He's gone.
Okay. Unanimous vote.
We approve that one. 41?
Make a motion that we receive and return to the auditor at her request.
It's a good one, hereby accept the revisions of the.
I think that's why we're returning it.
I think it was just a misprint. So, motion is to take 41, refer back to the auditor, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 44 is from Counsel Murphy Rumbelletti, order that the city council invite in the state delegation to attend the DGR meeting for an update, so to DGR. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? From Counsel Tomlin, number 46, order that the city engineer consider do not block the box at 56 Jackson Street.
Public safety.
To public safety, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 47 from Counsel Anderson Burgos, DPW place a stop sign ahead on the GNE pole number eight near Magnolia Ave, so receive, refer to public safety, copy to DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 48 from Counsel Anderson Burgos, that a flashing stop sign be installed to replace the current standard stop sign located at Magnolia Ave going up Portland Street. To public safety, copy to DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 49 from Counsel Givner, with community support that all four-way intersection, including either red blinking lights or solar-powered stop signs, new stop sign installed, including solar-powered lights, so.
Public safety.
Public safety, all those in favor? All opposed? To 50 from Counsel Givner, that the city forestry provide a safety action plan and timeline for annual tree maintenance, so to public safety, copy to city forester. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 51 from Counsel Givner, additional handicap parking space be added to 204 Oak Street to ordinance in the disability commission. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 52 from Counsel Jordane, Counsel Bacon, order that the city council rule 9P be modified to add, and there's a list here, so.
Charter and rules.
Charter and rules, copy to legal, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 53 from Counsel Jordane, Counsel Bacon, order that ordinance 2-421 be amended to include all public hearings, so that the public has the opportunity to truly participate to ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 54 from Counsel Jordane, order that the ministry of assistants of the council please remind all board and commissioners to publish their minutes on the website.
I'd like to have that receive, adopted, referred to our administrative assistant and to discuss with the various boards and commissions. He said he would help us with that.
Second.
So, receive, adopt, sent to Jeffrey, Jeffrey? He's already emailed all of them.
Okay, great, thank you, Jeff.
So, we'll get an update after he gets a reply. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 55 from Counsel McGee, order that the residency requirement for CPO, purchasing director be removed.
Ordinance.
Ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 57, Counsel McGee, at the Board of Public Works Commission, provide an update on the new sewer rate.
Ordinance.
To ordinance, all those in favor? All opposed? 58, order that the city treasurer be invited into finance meeting to update the cleanup efforts within the department to finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? For myself, order that all roads and sign issues be sent to the Public Safety Commission instead of the ordinance committee.
Charter and rules.
To charter and rules, all those in favor? All opposed?
We have a copy to the legal department, too.
And a copy to the legal on 50.
Either an order or charter language that talks about what we talked about earlier.
Right. So then, 60 is order that all employment-related ordinances, issues be sent to Public Service Committee instead of ordinance to charter and rules. All those in favor? All opposed?
Same thing, I have a copy.
Yep. 61, order that the Public Service Committee be renamed to Public Service and Human Resource Committee to charter and rules. All those in favor? All opposed? Off to late files. A is the list of salaries. First one is the Hoyoke Public Schools, top 100 salaries. Motion be received. And also, they got city employees here as well. So, that's A, and elected officials.
Those are what, posted on the website?
Posted? Yeah, already posted.
Okay, just motion to receive them.
Motion is to receive, all those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. President?
Yep.
I just have one question with regards to these salaries, right? Are these including overtime, or is overtime a side note? Like, would overtime be on top of this?
Included.
Included.
Including overtime?
Yep.
So, that's your base salary without overtime?
No, no, it's included. That means that includes their total compensation paid for the year.
Oh, so we don't have their base?
It doesn't break it out.
Oh, okay.
That's just how much they total got paid.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President? Yeah, just a quick comment, I just want to point out that number two on the public schools lives in Chicago. Thank you.
All right, so, that was received, it is posted, and that's what we do update every year. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? B is the release and settlement agreement to finance. This would be the, I do believe it's the football field? If I am correct?
Somebody told me it was a sidewalk project.
Might be a sidewalk project, I didn't get to read it yet, so, but it's $432,000 for settlement agreement, so to finance?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? C is from Counsel McGivern, which is insurance claims settlement, two contract services, claims and settlements, the fourth.
Finance.
Finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? D is from, order that the entranceway to the warehouse be named Jim Curran Way. Motion be suspend the rules, take up final action tonight?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So, this is to name the entranceway to the warehouse as Jim Curran Way.
Motion to receive and adopt.
All those in favor?
It's an overlay, right?
Yeah, it's just the, like all the other signs.
Yeah, the overlay.
I don't even, is that a public way? You're talking about the one that goes along the canal to his building?
Yeah, yeah.
Off of Lyman, because Lyman's the public street, but then once you start going into his property where the warehouse is.
I thought it was the road that goes in by the railroad bridge.
I think it's by the railroad bridge is what they were looking for.
Oh.
I think, we can confirm that, but, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'm in favor, yes. I just had one, I don't, I had a question about that, because someone had asked me the same thing about the road going up to the high school, dedicated after somebody that was a high school teacher back then, but I think that's whole of property, I mean, that's whole of high school property versus city property.
Right.